District B, Mr. Tom Bradford.
Here.
District C, Mr. James Green. District D, Mr. Derrick Green.
Present.
District E, Mr. Howard Locke.
Hello, Stan. We have a break. We'll break the following of the meeting and then we will be. Uh, we ask you to look at each and every person inside our voices, may your uh, give us a positive, make sound decisions by our community, uh, well as our state and for our nation, our statistics council, let's know people in this community that may have been signed on. Give us unity in this community for all, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Salute, live, our legislation is a beautiful flag in the United States of America. Consider our brother, who is the same, one nation under God, in the kingdom, with everything that is brought on.
It's left us to make sure the rest of, did anybody want to make a motion? Two council members, in K D.
I make the most, I make the most acceptable move.
Have a motion, second. Mr. Locke and Mr. Green.
Alright, um, would that be great?
Yeah, I have a request that the, that the order be suspended. And make a motion that, uh, second agenda, the first thing to speak the agenda. He plays, uh, in a proper order, if requested, in time, it should have been placed on the ready agenda in time. I'd like to get a motion to. Put this on the proper order and then on the.
You wanna add?
Yeah, add it to the.
What, the things that you requested from me? Some of the things that you requested?
Yes, exactly. He added to the property to arrange and we got to actually go and speak.
I'll say them there.
Alright.
You gotta, you gotta give a vote.
Are you ready?
Uh.
You made, you made, I made a vote. Okay, we straighten now. And Mr. Green, he's green, second, all in favor.
Which item was it? The item on the speaker, the item, we, we're on. If B, if B, three. If A, C, E, B. Number two, item A, B, C, D, E, in that order.
Alright. Okay, that's your request, Mr. Bradford.
Did you, did the body have something to get in the second? Do I go first? Yeah, thank you. Item number one, track program. Was using about the track program, I'm gonna make it simple. Motion to put the track on the back end. If we have to, I, I asked the attorney to clarify on this, a lot of our services are on that. If we have to, not, if we amend the agenda twenty four, twenty five years, I mean, our budget. It would be specific only for that particular line item. We are, I'm not asking for a motion to amend the whole budget, just that line item dealing with the park and recreation program. I'd like to get clear, clarify from the attorney, can we do that without interference? Because it reads in it earlier that, uh, resolution, you say all. So we were speaking of all, we don't wanna go into the budget and have to redo the whole budget, uh, or something to that nature, if we can do it for simply for that particular line item, without interfering with the budget. That's what we were putting up, uh, council.
I think, so, in regards to, excuse my bad, uh, in regards to the amendment with the. Oh, sorry. In regard, in regards to the amendment, the amendment resolution was placed there for y'all. That is the adoption instrument, what it has done is to clarify the intent, what occurred that night. And the intent was to disqualify funds for a team and. Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, the intent was to disqualify use for the, the track for the purposes of a team, but not for a program, if there was to be equipment or things for a facility. The other was, is that the football program had already passed its season when the budget was adopted. So there was, it wasn't necessary to have the budget there for football, which essentially would just look like a surplus or no expenses were gonna be expended because it had been done. As far as the other programs that had existed, there was an issue with those are the two programs that were to be listed to be deleted. The, instead of putting something back in like football that had already passed, which is just gonna create a surplus. Instead of putting in, uh, track, which obviously has its own issues that we've all discussed before. The goal was, was to put in there more of a budget statement from the council to state to the public. We weren't killing programs, what we were doing was is things that deadlines have passed for football already. So there was no need to have money allocated when we didn't have a football program this year. There was no facility use or to use or equipment related to that, except that actually did not occur because the league was going to just didn't come into development outside of the city. As far as the track, there was some known issues going on with track, the goal was to diminish the funds there until we could get to a ground room where we had a common understanding about what could be done with traffic moving forward. And so that budget statement was section seven is what I added to the budget adoption instrument. Was to say those deletions, the word, the term deletion is an accounting term for remove something from the thing. You can't just say wipe through, you have to use some form, you either add or you delete something. The deletion of the expense was just solely there for the purpose of, the football program had already run. The track issue is the issue that had been, what they had discussed and probably discussed much larger. And so the goal was, was to put a budget statement on there from the council, that this is why these things were done. It was a no way a wholesale thing to get rid of programs or anything, it was just there because that budget, when adopted, it was past the deadlines to have a football program. So if you wouldn't added it back then, you could still be creating a surplus that y'all sought to avoid where you could use funds better in other places, as an efficient use. Why dedicate funds to something that can't occur this year, because the time's already passed? It doesn't go into, so when you get to your twenty five, twenty six budget, you'll probably have some funds there for some kind of program. Because you had those funds being voted on and allocated prior to the date that this thing would occur. As opposed to when this was adopted in October, the program had already run. There was no program that was going to occur, so dedicate money to it was going to be inefficient and effective. So y'all sought to take away that expense, because it was an expense that wasn't gonna occur this, in that year. So the budget statement I all took was to show to the public, uh, what y'all had intended, which is what I heard from everybody, that we don't intend on wiping out programs, we just intend on, or not having facilities that have equipment, so the program's gonna occur with outside leagues. Our intent was not to do anything that wasn't proper. And things that the deadline had already passed on, that had funding, that weren't going to occur, we didn't need to leave funding in those items, because they're not gonna occur, the season had already ran. And so that's what that clarified.
So you, you, the football and track was under the same process, while we're here talking about track and not football as well? Because all we're gonna use for the video was remove the funding out of that particular line. I'm not understanding why you have to go to deletion.
Deletion is an accounting term for the item that's actually on the income side of it. Actually, look at the budget adoption, uh, amendment. The term that is used on the, on the expense side was the exact term that's used on the budget tables is.
Even if you say that, so why we not talking about football as well? Because the process was the same as with football and as track. Because we just said it, that we, we would have, already passed football, so that funding was there. So, um, the thing we did was remove the funding for football, so we won't create surplus. So why we not here talking about deletions for football, um, why we're here talking about tracks?
We're not, we're talking about all of them, we're talking about, that budget instrument has all.
Track is the one that was on the agenda last meeting.
I believe it says in.
So that's why I'm.
Item seven was, if you look at the actual amended amendment that's, that was put together for y'all. It says in section seven, which is just going to sup, it's going to supplement the budget adoption instrument. It says that the design of what y'all had done that night was to do exactly as I just said.
I, I, I get what you're saying, so the reason why the council was confused, because it was the same step for the whole program. So when we, so, so when we see the agenda, it's in the.
Track.
Track program, so.
I, I don't, I don't put agendas together.
Well, so, but we're speaking, she kinda speaking to you, so that's why we're here.
But, but if you're asking me about agendas, I don't, I don't.
So who we need to speak with?
You need to speak with the chairperson.
With a chairperson.
Probably have where Mr. Bradford requested that this item be placed on.
The reason he, the reason he requested, that's what I'm trying to say, the reason he requested is because we did the same as that thing when they adopted the budget, the same exact thing with track took place with the same way with football. So why, why did Mr. Bradford have to add track? The reason he had to add track, because we got, I, I had one agenda last meeting saying the council to approve, but the council had removed, and that wasn't the case, because that's the case in football, if you're there as well.
This was Mr. Bradford, did you wanna ask him?
Yes, yes, I think Mr. Green explained, just, just I would say, uh, it was last, uh, last week, it was track. Yeah, and football had passed, uh, but I feel that, looking at this resolution twenty five, twenty ninety two, if you have it in front of you, number ten eight, it's simply talking about the park and reservation sports programs. Programs, leading to track, baseball, any, uh, programs, if you, if you have it in front of you there, talk about all programs.
Which item you said was.
Uh, uh, that's, uh, resolution twenty five, twenty ninety two.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm talking about, section seven doesn't delineate out any team. It says to, that it's intent to, to have funding for the programs, but not for teams. Not teams.
So I, so I'm assuming that we have a track here because it was considered as a team?
Yeah, track is considered a team.
And, but also as a program, because I think you, you, you rectify as a team, they don't be part of it, all we, they're part of the city program.
And we was on your, we was on your.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause you can call it a program, correct, you can have a program where you offer facilities that have equipment and things like that, you can't have a team. The difference is, is, and it's kinda as Miss Ginger stood up that night, explaining, different leagues do different things, and you can't be.
I, I understand, I guess we're trying to get clarity. Recreation of sports program, with any blue, like you said, if we can't call it a team, but we can call it a track program.
Well, it is more than just a moniker, it's more than just a title. A program is just like, you had, like basketball. If you have a facility like, that has a basketball facility, and there's, there's equipment there and things like that, that would be like money designed to make sure that that program exists, so they play basketball there. As opposed to these or city bachelor teams, this is, we provide the uniform, we provide the cleats, the travel, or everything.
I think, uh, it was gonna be better move on, uh, because I was just informed when I came to the meeting tonight, that the track program had exhausted it well, you know, they can't get, they can't get ready for twenty five, twenty five. I think, you know, better move on, and that's so we can take upon in the future. I mean, I, I mean, you know, that's what back and forth we took back to clarity.
That's why.
Place on the agenda, if you want to see. Program.
Was that y'all are supportive of a program, but not a team?
Yeah, yeah, that's what we can, yeah, fill that out and, and we still want to.
So, so, so Mr. Bradford, the track program, you wanna table it?
Yeah, yeah, let's table the, uh, uh, track program and move on, we don't wanna tie the people up, you know, going back and forth. We got some little issues, and before we go any further, uh, on this agenda, I don't know. Any comments?
I make the motion, I make the motion to table track.
I said.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. P. Green to table track. Second, second by Mr. Bradford. All in favor?
We table it, but, and by the time we get back to the situation, because the problem was, like, you say, it, it, there's things between a team and a program, and the money was put into the general fund, that's the whole problem. What, what, that's the whole problem. So by the time we come back to it, we should have a, the audit and all that should be in, so we can see which way we need to go.
I think we have a lot of clarity.
We have a lot of clarity, so the audit should be in by the time we meet again.
I was just trying to give voice to what y'all had said, which is that you're not opposed to programs, you're opposed to.
I think we skipped an item.
Yes.
Um, we skipped an item.
We gotta go.
Didn't we go?
No.
Okay. All in favor? And opposed, or most carried, we skipped an item. Public comments of when we changed the agenda, took it out or public comments as it relate to items on the agenda Louisiana open meeting laws provides that the public has the opportunity to address this board prior to our taking on an agenda item at today's meeting. Members of the public will be given an opportunity to speak on any item before a vote is taken. You will be afforded five minutes to make your comments, and the entire public comment period will be limited to thirty minutes unless an extension is granted. This is not a question answer session, where you can ask questions or demand answers of the board members, mayor, or the city employees.
Well, I think, I think Mr. Bradford needs to say, uh, the items that he's raising the agenda to the general, so that people can speak on.
Okay, let me go, uh, like I said, item number two on the agenda, we just spoke on anybody, any other comments on the track, I think we got that stuff. And then to be clarification on, on A, A R P requests, we have Mr. Laura Hart here to appear. Everybody like to make a comment on the A R P funding? Council to, to vote on the fair audit to, for a temporary stop of all solar families in, in the construction inside the city limit of bash, anyone like to speak on solar family? I think I saw a couple of solar family people here, but this is your opportunity to speak. Also on the, we'd like to have a update, and one wants to speak on the forensic audit. And number E will be the audit report, requesting a copy of, finding the audit report was not here today. Not here, now I don't see Mr. Hart either, we gonna move through some of these things for, for the sake of time. Anybody wants to speak on A R P, anything you knew I just spoke of.
Chair, the whole chairs. Okay, would you state your name, sir?
Yes, Henry Doherty, San Francisco, District B. I just wanna know the, uh, item B, which says clarification on ARP with the request to have Ms. Laura Hart appear. Uh, question is, what is, what is that about?
That's the A R P funding.
No, 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 why is Miss Hart having to come back to?
Because she was part of preparations of the A R P program. She, she the one that kinda spelled it out for her and the mayor, uh. You understand, she's the one actually prepared, who received what.
Right.
She's part of the preparation of the A R P.
I understand, but why is she being brought back? Is there a problem with what she did, how she is, or that's how I stated it?
I, I would, I would say problem, but we need some clarification, how she came about with the, with those names and the figures and the amount that she, uh, submitted, uh, was submitted to the public with. I think at one time, I don't wanna say what Miss Hart said, but I think at one time she said the information she received, how she came up with her figure, was from the mayor. And that's where she put information to her, that's why I wanted her to be here to verify, you know, I don't wanna speak from Miss Hart.
So the only thing she's coming back for is to clarify.
Clarify.
Uh, how they got paid.
Right.
How the city employees got paid.
Right, how they got paid, where she get information from, and you know, I, see, it was basically, should have been done by the city council, I think the problem we have now that we are facing, and since we own this, I'll go for it. That it should have been done by the city council and the mayor, the criteria of how we gonna distribute these funds. Okay, it was never, the, the council never had any input on this. Okay, now, now we have, now we have a situation where we got employees feel that they are eligible.
Right, right.
Because they're, you know, they were done during the time, and, and, and due to rules of A R P, it doesn't state, you know, it doesn't really state they had to be employed present, they could be terminated, though they worked during their time period.
Yeah.
And I thought that the council really need to iron out and move forward on, like I said, because I, I appreciate you coming forward.
Right.
Only, but.
I understand all of that, what you just said, but if I'm sitting, if I'm sitting here and I'm reading the agenda, and it just says that Miss Hart is coming back, I don't have any idea why she's coming back. And that's the clarification I need, but the last question, uh, last comment, uh, when they, when Miss Hart came up with her list to pay whoever how much, right? Alright, when you guys, uh, have a, one of the city, uh, one of the city meetings, uh, did you guys vote on that as was, or, so, but did you, did you guys go back and approve the minutes of that meeting?
We, we go back to, we had did anything, we got some, uh, employees that came for, feel that they were eligible under that term, and we hadn't got any clarification from anyone yet, that's why we're here. To, to see what's the proper procedure to go about doing it. Because we wanna be better than everyone.
Right, and we, and again, some of the other councilmen can, can chime in, and what I'm, uh, what I'm asking is that when she, Miss Hart came up with the list and figured out how much each employee, because that's, that's the only reason why she's coming back, just that, just that section right there, right?
Yeah.
Okay, what I'm asking is, was there a meeting that was approved in the next meeting of the prior meeting by, by you guys?
No.
So there has been no meetings approved since, since, uh, December or January?
No.
And the thing is, Mr. Doherty, the funds were dispersed the week before our meeting. Um, so even if we did approve anything, it was all the people that received the payment, the payment was done without our knowledge.
Right, so basically, all, all I'm asking is, because again, I'm coming from a language perspective, if, if you guys put on the, uh, uh, type of agenda up and put an item on there, I have no way, and the public has no way of what you guys are talking about. And then if nobody asks any questions like, like I'm doing now, then there is no clarification on what's, what's going on. So, all these, all these you have on here, there is nothing specific about that, and how, how do we know which question to ask? If you don't put exactly what you're having somebody.
Also, with that, with the A R, with the A R refunding, why we, why we here are, because the administration, as well as ARP, put together guidelines. So you have an ARP guideline, do they display, do you have a, then you have administration guideline, so what we trying to figure out is where did the administration come with the guidelines? Because according to this list right here that we received, we got like seventy some people that didn't receive the payment.
Right.
Alright, of the seventy some people, I think you got thirty eight people that worked prior to the initial date guideline put in place by the city. And I think the guideline, they was October the first, twenty twenty one, through twelve, thirty first, twenty twenty two. But those are thirty eight, you have twelve, you have twelve people that didn't receive that money that worked the whole entire timeframe of the guidelines, so that's the question. Yeah, and that's a administration, that's a, that's a, but, and we gonna come into this problem where we gonna ask the mayor, and she gonna turn over to Attorney Jones, and Attorney Jones gonna tell us it's legal, but at certain times, he speak about, he only here for legal, but, but here we are, when we go with Attorney Jones, because the chairperson called Attorney Jones to speak to us, and then which causing us to be misled. Because he is our legal person, not just the mayor legal person.
Right, right.
So a lot of times, we've been falling into the situation where we listen to Attorney Jones, but he, half of the time, he don't supposed to be speaking, because he having to do legal. So then, it's, it's a chairperson question and answer, but she always turning to Attorney Jones, which is what we at now.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, and anything that have a legal potential to it.
Not everything, not everything.
I said anything.
I get that.
That has a legal potential to it, but you all have in your bag. I'm speaking.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Thank you. You all have a letter in your bag, so this, this heart, this heart was the expert, who was engaged. I think we've sent out the list several times, and emails several times, I don't know how many times this letter that Miss Hart sent out. We put it in a packet, and it's in your packet, again, tonight.
Yeah, and, and, and you are correct, so, but the, the thing is about is, you, Mr. Doherty just asked a question, but we do have individuals that feel that they wasn't treated right, was based off the guideline put in place by city administration.
And, and before we go further with this, uh, on this A R P, how many, how many people you said, Mr. Green, you came up with that fell, fell within that time period?
Well, it looked like.
Okay, we're getting out of order here, because now we having council members exchanging conversations with each other.
No, we know, we know.
Mr. Doherty made his statement.
But we still.
Let me, let me.
We should notice in parallel, okay?
Public comment, as they relate to items on the agenda, Louisiana open meeting laws provides that the public has the opportunity to address this board prior to our taking action on the agenda at tonight's meeting. Members of the public will be given an opportunity to speak on any item before a vote is taken. You will be afforded five minutes to make the comments, and the entire public comment period will be limited to thirty minutes unless an extension is granted. This is not a question and answer session, where you can talk, where you can ask questions and demand answers of the board members, mayor, or city employees.
Well, we, we, we all, we all sit here, we are publicly serving for the people. So if somebody come and ask a question, that, we, we will not be doing our diligence to not answer that question. So if someone come with me and direct a question towards the council, I feel like I have an answer, I'm gonna answer it. That's my ability, I'm sorry.
Okay.
You can come up.
You speaking about A R P?
I'm sorry. What item? Okay, we had the track program, clarification on the ARP, that's been discussed. Uh, council is going on a prepared order to temporary stop, pause, all, you, you asked that these items to take the agenda.
Right, and, and, and Mr. Doherty asked a question, I, like I said, I wanted to respond, and if, if no one else have any other questions on the A R P. If anyone have any other question on the A R P, I'd like to take an action.
I don't, I don't have any question.
Wait, wait. Hold on, you gotta say that, I do question.
I have a book coming.
Oh, oh, good.
May I get up, may I have a book coming? My name is Chesley Kennedy, my address is nine one four seven Redwood Drive. Actually, Louisiana seven one two two zero, I was a former employee for the A R P, however. Actually, we down seven one two two zero, I was a former employee for the ARP, however, I've been, I've already spoken at two council meetings in reference to this. Uh, first I wanna say thank you so much, Councilman Jerry Green. Um, you broke out, you broke that down very well, I applaud you for that. Uh, another thing I would say is, is like Mr. Green said, uh, decisions were made with Laura Hart, the CPA, and with the administration, and like Councilman Green is asking, who is the administration? Because the only part of the, 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 let me, let me calm down. The municipality includes the mayor and the city council. So if Ms. Hart only worked with the mayor on this and came up with these numbers and who was gonna get paid, and, and as I stated before several times, if the councilman didn't, wasn't a part of it, then how did these people get paid out? So I, I, I just wanted to reiterate what Councilman Green was saying, and what Councilman Rappert was saying, that also Councilman, um, Councilwoman, Tapping did say the same thing. Councilman had no knowledge of any of this, this is something that Mayor Oliver did all on her own. Um, so I hope that answered your question, but that's, that's all I have to say. But, yeah, the mayor, the mayor, the municipality, um, is, is, is all, is, is really the judicial legislative management branch. It's not just, you know, one branch, all of you all have to work together.
Okay, well, if you allow me to, or you do that, okay, if you allow me.
I mean, for the record, again, the letter that has been made up, sent, emailed, distributed from the Hart company tells the procedure and process that was taken.
One more thing about that letter, one more thing about the letter. Remember when I came up, I had the letter, and I forwarded it to all of you all, when I asked a few councilmen, had they ever seen the letter before? You all told me you all had never seen the letter, correct? So I'm trying to understand why the mayor keeps saying the, the, the letter has been circulated, circulated. Did you all even see the letter until I initially forwarded you all, to, to, to you all from the city clerk?
Nobody, nobody, nobody is, I'm giving me prosecution. Uh, I'm, I'm, my question, my question were, Mr. Green said something, this, this, Mr. J Green. I, I wanna give some clarity, how many persons you said that felt, that was in that time period was not paid, should have been paid?
Well, it's.
Well, feeling within that time period, let me say that.
It's, it's different how you look at it, if you, if you look at the list of, of people that's not, that haven't been paid, you have like seventy-one, I think it's all some employees, I seen Mr. Shaw, the late Mr. Larry Prater on there. But if you break it down to people who were prior, during, prior, the, uh, the dates that put in place by whomever, it's like thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
But then when I was looking closer to it, if you, if you look at the ones on the list between the dates of ten-one, twenty twenty-one, twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, I think it's like twelve. And I might, my calculation might could be a little off, but, so that's why I was, that's what we was asking about. The guidelines, because I, the only list that said ARPA guidelines, but I think ARPA guidelines oversee by the administration guidelines, so.
Okay.
And I'm just saying thank you, so as far as I hear, those are.
And I thank you, Mr. Green, for your time and research and narrow it down. We, we gotta get to a point, because like again, council had anything to do with, we apologize, we have a, we had, we should have. Uh, but that said, we narrow down to twelve, between thirty-eight and twelve people. Is that right, Mr. Green? You agree, between thirty-eight and twelve?
Yeah, we can go over it later, make sure, but I, I wanna say twelve.
Okay, you wanna say twelve people, because we gotta, we gotta go ahead and start kicking the can down the road. If that twelve people's out there that fell within that time period, because, because it doesn't say that they were terminated, or they resigned, or whatever, but if they fell within that time period, now the council, now this has came to our attention, that the council, we got to take action, and we got to find out where this additional money coming from. And, and, and that's something we need to go ahead and, and I'm, I'm with you, Mr. Jay Green, I think you want to say something, but Mr. Green, you let, that's okay with the mayor. Mr. Jay.
Mr. Green, I thank you. When you talk about the letters circulate, because Ms. Hart is down here, I spoke with her at the father's chair. She said she gave a recommendation as the ARPA guideline to the administration. Then she said it was up to the administration to determine the ones that was gonna get paid. So Ms. Hart has nothing to do with this, she just gave a guideline. Anybody that's gonna, need to be accountable is, you need to speak with the, 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 uh, this administration and attorney, because it's out of our hand, we didn't have anything to do with it, she just followed guidelines, and then the city set its own guidelines along with the ARPA. So now, when I spoke with the attorney a while back, and I'm just, just for clarity, I wanna just make it abundantly clear that we didn't have anything to do with choosing who got paid or whatever. So it comes back to the administration. Administration determines who was gonna get paid based on the recommendation from Ms. Hart. Now, if anybody fell out of that guidelines or fell between the cracks, I spoke with the attorney, he told me that the mayor had the discretionary power to pay whom. But then when you look at the list, it don't really make sense, because certain people got paid that was working at the same timeframe, and you can look at the discrepancies, and you can see why there would be a problem. Because if you go way back, remember, I'm the councilman that said, when we first got ready to pay this, say, for the can of worms, it's not gonna, be not gonna be pushed back and passed through this box. Because once you do something, you gotta do it to the content of the law, and you got to be straight and narrow. What happened when you leave gray areas open? Now we are a bad situation, because we have, we had nothing to do with who got paid. We had not, Ms. Hart did not contact us, when we found out, the list was already made, and as Mr. Tapping alluded to it, the payment was paid a week prior to us really convening. So if any questions that need to be asked about the other people that didn't get paid, need to be referenced to the administration and to the attorney. And Mr. Jones, you always speak about legal, legal thing, I, I want you to, if you can, give us some clarity on was it, what, what was the, what was the rationale between, since you the city council attorney and the mayor attorney, I'm asking you, in your legal opinion, what transpired with the ARPA funds? Why wasn't people paid? And while, who, how was the distinction between who got paid and who did not get paid? Who got paid, who did not get paid? So how did that transpire?
Councilman Jay Green, first, I thank Ms. Kennedy, because I've actually worked with Ms. Kennedy on trying to get documents. And, uh, and I would thank her, because we've worked together on trying to get the stuff and respond to things, but eh, as her and I have discussed, as my capacity as a city attorney, I simply give the law. That's why I gave them the last meeting. Here was the ARPA rules, and here was the rules that allowed, the ARPA rules allowed the municipality to narrow their eligibility pool. As far as what was chosen as what is eligible. I did not have a seat at the table in that decision, I don't make those decisions, that was nothing outside. That is, the extent of my involvement in that process is, this is the ARPA rules. This is what is, if you were to call me and say, uh, attorney, what can I do in my district with certain things? I would say, this is what the law allows, this is what you have discretion to do. Kind of like with the ARPA funds, that y'all each get allocated. I just say it, and then y'all all each call and say, this is what I wanna do, I'll tell you how to do it legally. As far as the guidelines and the requirements, I didn't have any piece in that. All I said was, this is the ARPA rules, which actually, the ARPA rules were articulated by Ms. Hart, who deals in that day-to-day. I have often said, when it comes to financial things, your CPAs, I know what the law is, but what specific things, that goes for people who deal with day-to-day. To dumb it down real short, I said, this is the ARPA rules, they allow for us to go within this period. As far as what factors were picked or things like that, I didn't have a seat at that table, I don't have that conversation as to why things were picked. I did not pick the guidelines or do the guidelines, simply involved with what is legal. And I've tried to facilitate information flow, as for Ms. Kennedy, I'll respond to her emails.
Mr. Jay.
Yeah, I mean, I narrowed down, I, based off, based off what, what administration guidelines was put in place, I narrowed down to, to that, and, and I was only narrowed down to the, to the ten-one, twenty twenty-one, and twelve thirty-one, twenty-two did. I mean, that's, that's all it makes sense, because you had.
Well, I'd like to make a motion, if we, if the administration, along with the council, take into consideration and narrow down these names, we maybe have a meeting with the mayor or council, and narrow down eligible people that should be paid on the ARP program, and they should be paid. Where it coming from, that's a different question, I think I asked myself that, I just can't reach up in the sky and realize payment from anywhere. So that, that's what we have to discuss with the mayor, with the administration, I guess.
Yeah, because it's, it's. And Ms. Hart was giving all these names, and, and again, like I said, stated, you have Robert Shaw, and Robert Shaw is the council member, and I'm sure why he on the list. Then you have Larry Prater, making rest of the, the, he's on the list. And I maybe have my brother, my brother been, my brother died since, in twenty-two thousand, I'm sorry. So like, when you come to all these names, we, I, without knowing what the administration put in place for their guidelines, I'm only based on what I see according to what the letter Ms. Hart said, and they stated from, uh, October first to December the thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. So that's what I said, if you make an emotion for us to sit down with the administration to go over the guidelines to the front part, then I, I second it. But I, it's, I only narrowed down based off what I, what I see.
I thought, uh, so the council was screwed.
Well, this, this, you see.
Why you said Mr. Robert Shaw's name was on there, and Mr. Prater?
His name is on.
Well, I thought we were screwed, so.
Well.
I'm confused.
Well, that's, that's exactly what we were told, and Ms. Hart told us.
I mean, I was eligible.
That's a, I think the move for time, we wanna be respectful to the people.
Yeah.
No, that, I think that is a second.
And, 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 and it do come stimulated from Ms. Kennedy, you know, giving us this list, because prior to, we didn't, I, I, because the mayor told me that. I didn't have this of, of who was paid, who was not paid. And upon receiving the list, this past meeting, it was, you know, best to go through it.
I'd like to make a motion that Councilman Green, Jay Green, I mean, Deegreen, excuse me, let me try to get this clear. That the councilman Deegreen, meet with the mayor and the mayor administration, and try to narrow this down, and, and, and get it back, and we make a sound decision, bring it forward to council, with something we can vote on, and move forward. And at that time, we can figure out where the funds are coming from.
You just volunteer.
Yeah, I hope so.
Well, if, if.
If, if you don't mind.
I, I don't mind working alone with another council.
No, yes.
Yeah, I would be, because we used to.
And what else, I would, Ms. Green, Deegreen was up for you? Don't need to bother me, I would, if you was.
Wait, wait just a minute, um, the, the ARPA money, the deadline date, it's December the thirty-first, it has to be obligated. So there, there's a different set of regulations at this point. And, and no council member received any money, there were so many requests made, from different configuration of the list.
But didn't Mr. Green say that Councilman Shaw and Councilman Prater was on that list?
They was on the list of not receiving, but they was on the list, so I, I'm assuming, Ms. Hart not here to answer my question. I'm assuming that the list that we all have, it was not.
And Ezra Tapping was on it?
Your name on it. Um, I'm assuming that these are all the names that were sent over.
But if we can try to get to the bottom of those things, okay, uh, if Mr. Green, Mr. Deegreen, and myself could get with the mayor, and try to get this narrowed down, so we can bring it back, back to the post of council, that gives us enough time, how we gonna figure out? Once we figure out the number, then we'll know what amount of money we need. Right now, to say we finna pay one, don't pay the other, we be back, right back in the same limbo.
But also, on the, on the. On the more financial side of it is that this guideline was good, and, and for ARPA funds, being, being that if the ARPA funds have been allocated, where we behind this still, which is a, a, you like to spend money.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So what we are running to at that moment was, would be key, a differential to the city, to the city administration, so. If, if, if there's any way we can sit down and mean, and we have ARPA funds, having, they've been allocated but haven't been, um, uh, allocated is what, what it do, they won't hurt them, it's been allocated with.
Obligated.
Obligated, then we can go from there.
Okay, I, I, Mr. Green, uh, again, we talk about the ARPA fund, the ARP fund, we still had money that maybe, so not talk about the budget, but the ARPA fund had two point some billion dollars there, they gave us fifty thousand to each council, they gave seven hundred and fifty thousand to do the roof, I mean, the interior of the, of the building. Maybe we need to go back and read a chest.
It, it don't work like that, so once, once they're allocated, then it's, it's going with the obligation. I, I don't think that, and again, that's, that's now, that's a legal question, I don't think that you can unobligate some that's already allocated.
Well, we allocated a truck, one of the trucks that they had in, I mean, we took out one of the.
Joe was doing the. Obligation, obligation some is, is in the process of purchase, it's rented to purchase. Allocating is when you, just like a list with the missing trees and stuff like that, that was just a list to allocate the funds.
So, to clarify, your funds had to be obligated by December the thirty-first. You, after December the thirty-first, your final ARPA American Rescue Act report stating what has been obligated to prior to January one of this year is due, I believe, in March. Is it March or April, April good, does it do that on it? That, so once you obligate those funds, and it's past December thirty-first of last year, you cannot unobligate them from somewhere as an offset or elsewhere, it has to be provided to that project, or those funds lapse and go back. So the funds that were obligated for payroll stuff, for the, for the premium pay, any additional funds that, let's say we did a project that was obligated, and we obligated a hundred thousand dollars, but the project came back and only expended ninety thousand, that ten thousand would go back.
Go back to the project?
Go, would go back to the United States government. So at this point, any money that would be paid out to people who weren't previously paid or need this would have to come out of your general funds. And then you run into a magnitude of issues of paying people bonus pay from city employment, which, which brings you into another realm of issues. So at this point, what's been done, has been done by, but you can't go back and use our funds. You can't say, hey, we, we set this, just, we set these rules, we, we defined who we wanted to pay, and there's some people that lapsed out the list. You can't go back and use our funds to do that, you'd have to actually use, because those ones were obligated prior to January one. So you don't have any ARPA funds that you can unobligate to send back that way.
So we would have to create resolutions to pay money out of the general fund.
Yeah, and there's some legality around paying actually, even premium pay, and there is, is it possible? Maybe, it's really, there's, you're never supposed to pay the bonus out of things, but the, there's not a lot of defined, determined general opinions, they're all regarding the ARPA funds, because the premium pay was first viewed as a bonus. If you'll notice, there's a lot of opinions about, later they determined it wasn't a bonus, because the ARPA rules, and it's a federal government grant, and they deploy a federal government and state government. But you doing it out of your general fund, I think, would be characterized differently. Uh, but you can try and piggyback the rules to remember where it's gonna come from. So if somebody was within the requirements but not met the list, uh, as Ms. Kennedy has articulated, or expanding it too further than what the mayor's, the administration's rules were to maybe take up the difference between which was decided and what ARPA would allow, that money would come out of your general fund. So hopefully that provides some clarity.
Hello, my name is Carolyn Harris, I'm living five twenty-one, Oliver Drive. I just wanna say is that during the timeframe of that, when the time period, I was actually employed by the city. I actually was employed, so I called up here to find out, and I was told it was only going to the ones that were still employed.
Yeah, so, and, 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 Ms. Harris, and, and, because I, I'm not sure if you was here at the time I stated this, but there were like twelve to thirteen people I, I, I.
Twelve to thirteen people I I I identified you was one of. Because I think you started, I think you started in probably. Maybe July of twenty, July, August of twenty twenty one. And I think you was, your end date was twenty twenty three. So that's why I said, I don't, I don't know if. And I'm assuming the determination or or resigning was was put in place as a default from the administration. So I again.
But that's what I was hoping that because I, it was only for the ones that were still employed.
And and I don't, I and I'm pretty sure that's not a, that's not an offer guideline, but I'm pretty sure that's a. Administration guideline.
Okay, but what if if you worked during that time, that 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 money came in, then you should have been included in that.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure all of the considerations are right with you.
Speaking of on the list, on the list, it has term, it has the people that didn't get paid has terminated. Right? And you have a whole list of people that's terminated. It has my name on there. I resigned. It has Mark Moore name on there. He resigned. It has Ronald Will Hight on there. He resigned. So my question is. And I and I love how Mary is sitting, like she say public company, she don't have to answer no questions. So thank all of you all that don't mind answering questions for the public and put you, put yourselves on front street. Let the public see that you don't mind answering hard questions because I see how she's sitting there not saying a word when she's behind all of them. So when I think about it, you didn't pay me. You didn't pay Mark Moore. You didn't pay Ronald Will Hight. You didn't pay Kishana. What's her name, police officer? You didn't pay Kishana Lynch. And I know for a fact, I've already stated when when I spoke a couple of times ago, that she had a vendetta against me. So the people I just listed, she didn't want to get some too.
Uh, I just want to make a comment on the offer fund funding. If these people are entitled to it. Uh, I think you ought to pay them higher y'all, even if the funds have have been exhausted. You have a. The general fund. And it's not like they, you you doing something that you shouldn't do because you should have paid it, you know? So and if it was you, you were going to get, you were going to get your duty more, especially if he was working during that time. So if you do have to go to your general fund and make these payments. And you say you got to shuffle the budget, just be specific about. How much of the budget money you gonna do? Don't just change the whole budget or redo the whole budget. Just be specific about what you do.
Well, here's, here's what we run into with them, Miss Kennedy.
Miss Brack?
Oh, Miss Brack. Oh, I'm sorry, T T. T T, this this what we 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 gonna run into. We gonna run into to to like, okay. So we get the money, we get the money out of general funds. Based off the last budget, we already adopted a budget at two million dollars uh deficit, right? We going to be two million dollars in. Like offset two million dollars the city going to. So we we be, if we pulling one of our general funds and we run into a problem like, well, we we gonna have to cut from somewhere. So being cut from somewhere, then that mean. First, first, let me go back to of the seventy people that didn't get paid. We don't know the guidelines. We definitely can't afford to pay all seventy people. Because if we pay all seventy people, then here we are, we gonna, you know, we gonna be.
Maybe you can put them in the next budget. The new budget that's coming.
So and so again, how the budget, so how the budget going, we already going into two million dollars deficit. So so.
You have two million dollars of rescue money and now you're in a deficit deficit?
Because that, because the rescue money wasn't used. It wasn't. It wasn't you, it wasn't used. And I'm only coming from my seat to create revenue. It was more used to create more expenses because the things that we purchase like cars, vehicles, like vehicles always come with a continual expense. Because you gotta do the upkeep on. Like I I didn't, and and again, administration, you can talk, I don't know what's in place that say, hey, we spun this out of the rescue money. But we gonna receive this going forward. So with that, with that not in place, then we'll, in order to put in a budget, we gonna have to cut from somewhere. Then it comes to a problem like, what do we cut from? Because if we cut from somewhere, that mean we couldn't somebody. Or employment opportunity because we, in order to make ends meet, to pay the seventy people, we gotta pay the all seventy people. That's what we run into that problem.
So.
And 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 the thing, we we would like for everybody, we. We would have liked for everybody to be treated fairly. And and I say it to say. I still don't know what the guidelines. I still don't know how they choose who they choo, who was chosen to get paid. Because if I if I knew that, then I can, I can better explain to you or articulate to you what I'm trying to, what I think should have happened, but I don't know.
You know, when I look at. We was going through this, the city not being cleaned up, grass grown over everywhere, the policemen, you couldn't give them a raise. I mean, you were sitting on two point some million dollars. How is all that was possible when you had all this money, but you were saying you didn't have no money? So what can people think? Here you come up with two million dollars. I'm still saying you gotta pay, drop you to pay off. I guess I just don't understand it, but that's that's all I think.
Thank you for your comments.
What's a, what's a great question to me?
Oh, well, thank you for your comments. Where does that put us?
Okay, the next thing would be uh scene. Council will hold on in preparation, prepare order for a temporary stop. And pause all solar panels projects inside the city and a basket for new construction. Anybody come? That scene there.
Scene. Mr. Green. Mr. Jay Green, since you had a comment. This is, this was your.
But we should have commented, I think. So was he coming in? No comments on it? Okay, well, I would have a motion.
Mr. Jay Green wants to say something.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Go ahead. As to regard to the solar panels. When he was talking, when he's talking about this ordinance. My only thing when I, when we talk about solar panels, I I look at. Bastion as a municipality, you don't have so much square footage. So my thing about it is, you have to look at the rewards versus the risk. So. I guess what I'm saying is when you look at the solar panels, it's not from a, from my standpoint, it's not from a health issue. I'm looking at economics one oh one. If you occupy all of your land, all of the land is already equipped. For industrial stuff. And you fill it up with all of these panels. What's gonna happen when a job, well, the panel is probably ten to twelve jobs. What's gonna happen when you use all of your area, all of your land spaces inside the city limits? That's for industrial. And you use it up and you fill it up with all of these panels. What's gonna happen when a job comes and will break? A thousand jobs here. Five hundred jobs here. Ask yourself the question. Where you think those jobs gonna go to if you have nowhere to put them because you gonna fill up all your spaces with panels? They gonna go outside the city limits. And guess who's not gonna get any funding? The city of Bastion. So it's a, it's something that we need to think carefully about. Because we talked about economic development. You cannot just give away your prime real estate. To be filled up with panels. Somebody say, well, you can make it a million dollars worth of taxes. Well, if you got a thousand, two thousand people working. You gonna get that based on the uh equipment versus, and you also gonna get economic reward because people gonna have jobs. So I would look at five hundred to a thousand jobs versus twelve jobs. So I don't have nothing against solar panels. But I'm just looking, most of, most of municipalities have them outside the city limits. You know why? Because there's a vast land of farm land outside the city limits that you can put it. But inside the city limits, think about, how many plants have we had in the city of Bastion? Since you been born? International Paper Company? The old mill? The railroad tracks already run through, it's already set up. For anybody that wants to come in with some type of uh. With with some type of jobs, may or factory jobs. So that's the only, that's my only sticking point is that you gotta look because you gotta think now. They went to the police jury the other day and they finna build an industrial park outside the city limits. You know what that mean, right? They looking at, y'all feeling, all y'all stuff was solar panels. So how many jobs that came to our industrial park? Zero. So we have to be mindful and we have to strategize and don't have short term vision. You got to think long term. You got strategically think about what's in the best interest of the city of Bastion. Not about your friend, none of that. We have to be worried about the city of Bastion. And guess what I found out being in the Navy? On the ship, you have to take care of yourself. You don't have to worry about outside people rescue. These other people, they probably live outside the city limits. That's why when I was talking about special permit. I wasn't being, I wasn't trying to be ugly or anything. I just meant what I said. If you gonna bring in something of that magnitude, it should come before the council because we represent our constituents. And probably nobody ever really thought of it. You know, you got a bunch of solar panels, but you got twelve jobs. Well, if that area is gone, tell me what other areas inside the city limits that's developed right now. For economic prosperity. Probably none. So that is my only problem I have with solar panels. I have nothing against companies. I don't have a dog in the fight. I'm just looking out for my city, the city that I love. And I'm, and I'm, I'm here representing district sleep. And that's my take on it. And if you wanna vote on solar panels, fine, but I'm telling you. It's gonna adversely affect economic growth inside the city because you have no more land. We got a bunch of dilapidated housing. So if you go tear it down, it's a project in process. When a job, when a company wants to come to a city, they want something already developed. They wanna be able to come in, they gonna look at the structures and they wanna come in. Uh, a five year project, a ten year project, that company's gonna be somewhere else. Because you gotta remember, this is a global, global economy. It's not localized. It's on deal with everybody over the United States. So I just ask everybody on this council and everybody in the city of Bastion. Let's think it out and let's think long term and let's strategize to make Bastion really better and let's make the city a winner. Because right now, it is a. It's just gonna make, it's not feasible to continue going down that road. With all these panels just sucking up all of our industrial thing. But if you get outside the city limits and we can. Uh, expand the city limits or whatever outside. I don't have no problem with panels inside the city limits. But that area over there, IP pad is already set up for industry. So why would we fill it up with solar panels?
Mayor. I think each one of us. We ran for office. One of the main tenants, we's glad that we want to try.
Talk to your mic.
We would want to try and do something for our city. To stir economic development. Now, I just can't believe that we're gonna sit here. And miss an opportunity to get a development to come to our city to do work. First of all. If I'm not mistaken, that property has been bought, right? Am I correct?
Yes.
That's a private property.
Yes.
Still gotta get a license on the city.
Just to make a letter, Mr. Locke.
Let me say this. We have an opportunity when the board meets, we can meet with them. But nobody met and said anything negative about solar panels not being built in the city. We don't have. Someone coming to town that I know of. Expressing a desire. To increase our coppers. Now, we sitting here arguing about people not being paid. And I just can't believe we're gonna sit here and say no to economic development in the city. It 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 doesn't. I I just can't understand this, that we gonna say, we don't have anything else coming in unless I, somebody knows something I don't know.
I got a form of information from the council from this. When did you find out the dispanel? Have you heard anything about this panel? See, that's what we talk about transparency. Let's talk about economic development. Let's talk about job. Somebody explained to me on this council, maybe I'm missing something. Have anybody on this council been contacted about any jobs coming to Bastion? Only time we know is when they're here. Am I not right or wrong? Am I, am I not right or wrong? And Mr. Locke, you stated that. The uh denying people economic prosperity coming to this city. When did we, have we ever met with the company? That's coming here? Do we know what company is coming here? Do we know what company is coming? I want information. See, everybody got this private notion. I spoke with the workers. I, I said, does the council as a whole know anything about this company coming to Bastion? I I I'm just asking, we are, I represent my district. I mean, if you, if you got insight on it, please share.
Go ahead, Mr. Green. State your name and address. And I am project manager for Clearstream Solar, the company which is speaking on today.
What is?
Clearstream Solar, if you name the company. A little background information, I'm, I've been part of this municipal family for probably two decades. In the shadows individually, there's each and every council member. On this council, including the mayor. They know me, they know what I'm, I was part of zoning for the city of Bastion for seven years, so I've known. The ins and outs of the procedure that's in place to zone. I'm also on the board of directors for North Carolina Regional Planning District. While I sit forty four mayors across twelve parishes assisting in. With federal funding for all of your infrastructure, sewer, water. So believe you me when I tell you, I'm well versed in what you're talking about. Any of you individuals. And correctly from wrong, it's probably eighty to ninety percent of you have my personal knowledge. And at any time of the day or night, I will answer my call. But not one of you reach out to me and ask me anything. You never asked to come to the facility. You never asked me a question about anything. You came by my site, you spoke with some of my workers. They gave you their answers to the best of their abilities. But yet and still, we went through the procedures, we were approved, I got my documentation from the city attorney, I got everything in my package. And to Mr. Locke's comment, that was private property. When IP sold it to Total One, they had the autonomy and the due diligence to market that property to the world. If the city wanted that property, they should have bought it.
Which property prefer, sir?
All the IP money.
Which old mill would be specific? Old mill or old mill or the new mill?
I both.
Both, okay. I wanna make sure, I wanna dress you right.
Clearstream Solar owns all IP property, with the exception of the twenty two acres that Mr. Brian Merritt that built the Bastion singlet, he owns that twenty two some odd acres. But the ten acre site and the hundred and sixteen acre site is the property of Clearstream Solar. And to your point about industry, for those of you that aren't familiar with brownfield sites. Both of those sites are brownfield sites. And there are only certain things that you can do on a brownfield site. Which is, and I'm not trying to do an educational class to those that aren't aware. The point I'm trying to make is this, we've been here for a year. We've worked with municipality, we follow procedure, we dotted our i's, we crossed our t's. If you. Were the, were left in the large or left in the dark, I'm happy to come down and apologize. But when it comes on the agenda and is clearly marked and posted on the door, is your due diligence as a councilperson. To see that and to attend those meetings, which you can ask the public say, we're hoping for.
When did your organization, your whoever you've been, you've been on the North Delta, you've been part of the zoning committee? When did you come before this city council put your project?
I came before zone.
No, no, I I say city council, I asked you about zone. The zoning don't run the city government. That's the problem. I want to make, take this right now. You are out of order, your company is out of order. We have not consumed properties. You know, let me finish, I let you draw, let me finish. I wanna make a flip, we won't be a misunderstanding, believe me. Okay, okay. Your company bought it from Total One, I'm familiar with Total One. Total One, they bought it from Total One, I'm talking about the new site. They bought it for seven hundred thousand dollars. How many, six hundred? Okay, well, I I got the document in front of the city hall. Seven hundred thousand dollars. Then turn around and sold it back to Total One. It's an all trick. And you are not gonna do anything in the city of Bastrop unless you come before this council and your zoning permit, your zoning board that you sit on should have known that. You should have known that, but you're the man, you should, you should love those ones that you have. I'm I'm confused, I wanna be clear, I'm not, I, take it or not. Don't sit here and say it's mostly this community. Don't sit here and say mostly this community would get that because there's nobody in United States that, where solar panels sit in a population of people. Yes, you may. Yeah, I just wanna make, I don't like people coming down the smoke when you see a jump. They got away with it already.
In the previous council meeting, you went on record stating that the site would kill thirty-five hundred people. This site, the ten-year site, cancer, all of those things. Do you have any statistical?
Yes, 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 I'm way, I'm way deeper than you, yes, I have.
No, no, if you're gonna speak, you need to have that.
It it's council, verdict effect. Yeah, I'm I'm gonna break it to your organization when I meet with you. I'm gonna meet with you.
You should have been in the ladder instead of the floor.
I'm gonna meet with you. As a council, as a citizen.
May I ask the council person to your left the question? May I ask, would you yield the floor to, uh, yield the floor to this pastor?
Sure. At this point, we have far exceeded the time, but we're just taking the agenda out of order. So.
Mayor, I have, for the sake of time, I have a young lady here that needs to speak. And she has an obligation, she needs to, uh, leave bingo too. And she needs to speak on eleven eight. So I'm gonna make a motion to get this out of order again, so she can speak, so she can go to her appointment.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Tavon has has made a request that's intentional, somebody we've been, we've been here from six. Okay, Ms. Tavon has laid a warrant to take the agenda out of order.
I think.
We have a motion upset, all in favor? Any opposed? Item number eleven eight. Other new business discussion, acting, ambulance service, issues, ads, contractor services, including the policy board and action regarding creating and membership and addendum to the service contract. Would you state your name, please?
My name's Kelsey P. Johnson. I live at eighteen thirteen Holy Valley, down in the blue. I'm the ER director in Washington. Um, I just wanted to come today to speak on the ambulance service. Just inform the council that we're having a lot of issues getting psych patients transferred out. Whether these are commonly things that psych patients need, they need to be getting there. They need to be getting their psych consults. And if I'm in there, um, I believe that the beneficial for the community EMS and sheriff's office to find other alternatives or have a revised contract with that. The sheriff's office used to have a contact with us where they could transfer all of our psych patients out. But they canceled that and now we rely a lot on EMS. Which when you rely on EMS, that takes them out of nine-one-one service lot. So that really puts a burden on the community. Um, it puts a burden on the ER. When you have somebody that has a heart attack, stroke, or any kind of trauma, you may have a truck that's out of order. You know, counseling or taking a psych patient that may not be quite as comfortable. And another thing that causes issues is that, I've heard they can't transfer psych patients after a little bit. So sometimes the psych patient will get stuck for seven to eight hours.
Wait, wait, wait just a minute. So we have a representative from Patrick here. Okay, okay. When we make reference to someone.
She she can continue.
I I did give a point for our prime notification that that company was going to be discussed. Okay. Okay, if you come closer, representative from Patrick.
So really what I'm trying to say is that we either need to find some other, maybe the sheriff's office, try to find some other form of able to give these patients transferred out, maybe revise a contract with them, try to get a transport truck here in the parish. We, I mean, we have twenty-five percent of our patients are transferred due to being a psych patient. So it is a high volume for us.
Um, I I mean, I do. I kind of passed out some information. Where the sheriff department in October sent us a termination contract of services. At one time, they were transferring all of our psych patients. Um, in October, they decided, because of liability reasons, that they could not help, um, the hospital out anymore. At that time, it put the hospital in hardship. We had to rely on Patrick, which, um, Patrick, you know, I think had some limited, um, limited trucks, so he can discuss that. A lot of times, they didn't have the building truck to transfer these psych patients out. They would sometimes hit the hospital six to eight additional hours and some psych patients really need help quickly. So we need to find a way that we can get our psych patients out in a timely manner. Um, so that is what we're really looking for, trying to figure out a system that we can accommodate our psych patients and do diligence to the care that they need.
Go ahead then, I think I would dare to allow Patrick an equal opportunity to make a statement.
Good afternoon. My name is Lloyd Taylor. I'm the operations manager for Patrick EMS. Um, in regards to the psychiatric transfers, there has been a great increase in psychiatric emergencies across the United States, specifically in our region. Um, which when I refer to our region, I refer to the North Louisiana service area that we cover for Patrick EMS. And we've had several different committee meetings with representatives from the western district, the western area of Louisiana on psychiatric care. There is a lack of facilities in North Louisiana that can care for psychiatric patients. Uh, with that lack of care that does clog up emergency departments. Our number one goal is provide emergency care to those who need it in North Louisiana. By responding to nine-one-one calls and life-threatening interfacility transfers. A psychiatric transfer, we have a hard policy that any transfer that goes a great distance after a certain time at night, we refer that to the next morning. That way, there's a fresh ambulance crew available and puts that patient at a safe, safe capacity, as well as the ambulance staff to get to that location. Now, if that patient requires an emergency transfer such as heart cap, cardiac bypass, respiratory failure, by all means, we're gonna do everything we can to add an additional person on an ambulance, um, from another service area to help us get that patient to definitive care. Um, now, as far as Morehouse is concerned, Ruston also, they do have to provide one-on-one care with the psychiatric psychiatric patients. Um, that is a problem across the area. I'm definitely willing to work with Kelsey hand-in-hand as well as the city council to help find a solution for this problem.
Um, I think we kind of have it already figured out. Um, I'm asking for amendment of the contract that where we can contract with another company to transport our psych patients. Because this is making a hardship for the hospital right now. Our lack of staffing, um, sometimes dangerous situations. We had a situation last week, psych patients assaulting staff. So we have to get them out as quickly as we can. So that is my suggestion, and that is what I'm asking for. To amend the contract to allow another company to do the psych transfers.
If you don't mind me asking, that doesn't come to the city. Or psychiatric transfers, are those considered emergency services?
It is not an emergency life threat situation. Uh, they are there with someone who can protect that patient from harming themselves.
But it's, but it's not what would be considered an emergency service?
It is an emergency service for us to get that patient out, but it's on a scale of life threat versus non-immediate life threat.
So do you guys have a, a problem moving a psych pa- patients out?
Oh, we don't have a problem. We can only shift ambulances from one service area to another. The only concern is when you send someone out late at night, all the way to New Orleans, is it takes the ambulance out of service for quite some time, as well as it makes it sometimes unsafe for that patient. That late at night with crews on duty, that have been on duty and ran ambulance calls for the previous fifteen, sixteen, seventeen hours.
Having, I have some type, some type of pickups to, 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 um, remove in psych pa- places, like, like lack of vehicles?
No, sir. We do not have any lack of vehicles. Uh, we provide three advanced life support ambulances here in the city of Bastrop. And when necessary, we move those ambulances from other areas to the city that support it as needed.
And and I know, I've been a nurse in Morehouse for thirty years.
Yes, ma'am.
I work in case management, so I'm aware about the transfer time, the situations. Um, and you have not been able to take care of the psych needs, which I know it happened, you know, all since October. But for the sake of, um, for of Morehouse Parish, we have to do something and make sure that we get our patients to the location they need to go. And I know it's a strain, and you said you have three trucks. A lot of times you only have two in the area.
We have three that are stationed here in this area that are assigned to the Bastrop area and run calls within the city as well as parish. And additional units from the neighboring counties or parishes that come over to help when necessary.
Good example. What is, what is the incident, example? What is the incident before with situation with a truck, but it's on a late, long period of time?
Um, we get stories all, I mean, all the time. And I looked in the contract and I see that y'all are supposed to like provide like a report, like of all the nine-nine calls. Um, looks like I think says about a tenth of each month.
Yes, and that report is available.
But we, we never seen it. And it's just, we'll provide, I guess, the council, we never seen it.
Once you guys, uh, allow us to provide that report and make that request, we'll provide it to you with no problem whatsoever.
So with that report, do they have the complaints as well?
Um, the complaints, the complaints that we receive, I'm sure that we could report those to you as well.
Yes, I think I had to, I had a situation with Patrick.
I'm very interested in hearing that.
Yeah, and that's fine, but this is kind of an emergency situation for the hospital. And we need to secure adequate transportation for our psych patients. That is something that needs to be done ASAP. And I cannot stress that enough. Our patients cannot wait eight to ten hours to be transferred out to a psych facility. It's not safe for the staff, it's not safe for the patient, it's not safe. So we need to do something to, even if they, maybe if they can sometimes and they can't, we still need an option. As the number two option to take care of our patients. We we have that obligation to do that.
Yes, ma'am. I'll be more than happy to sit down and interview with the hospital, with, um, the director of the ER as well as the CEO to see what we can come to and make a resolution to move forward and get those patients out in a timely manner.
I feel like we provided the, the emergency call, force report.
Uh, we've never been asked for that report, but when asked, we will duly provide that.
Can we, can we, can we start the notes report?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's part of the contract that will be provided, ten working days in the fall.
Yes, um, I will get with, um, the mayor and find out exactly, um, where those reports need to go to.
Okay, um, turn it down. There are chain of custody issues associated with the ambulance service. Uh, I do know the coroner makes the diagnosis, because I've had situations, um, not me, but situated where I am. Calls in reference to situations. Um, but the coroner had to make the diagnosis, correct, sir?
Um, there are times when the coroner has to make the order of protective custody to place that individual in custody. And in some areas, uh, that we are dealing with, the law is required to transport those patients to the police department.
You regular physicians can also do a protect, protective custody order. So yeah, you all doctors, those, um, putting patients in protective custody, you have primary physicians, then you can, you can have first practitioners do it. So several people can do this, not just a coroner.
That is correct.
Yeah, it, it makes like the issue is involved, I think it's.
It's transportation.
It's the, 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 the emergency committal work on a physician's rigid issue is the patient being taken to a facility because they probably can't, an acute ER wants triage. The treating physician at that time then makes the order of the diagnosis, orders the, uh, position to emergency, uh, care order issue. At that point, where we're discussing, where treating, taking them from an acute facility that is a hospital facility to a more inpatient acute facility that can do a longer term, seventy-two hours, seven days. And we have a, a, a psych pa- patient that's around employees, eight hours of them, I think that's pretty much. Yeah, well, I mean, their contract is to transport all emergency services. The way the, the way the gentleman from Patrick articulated was that it was emerg, it was possibly not considered emergency because they have a delineation. So I asked, do y'all consider that emergency services? Because if it was not considered an emergency services, it's outside the contract and we can just.
We can give a paper.
But the addendum that I probably seek to contract is, is that for what is considered these physicians, uh, commits, uh, that it be, uh, that they be the first, you know, something to the effect that they be first contacted, they're unable to do it. And we haven't had anyone spelling out it in regards to TPC, these patient transfers. Is another A C P O possible to do it after the first agency, something able to do it within a period of time?
Right, and that's, that's the, uh, goal of this, is not to take away the business out. It's just, uh, uh, make sure we give an adequate patient care and give them to the best possible facility. So that's the goal to this. If y'all cannot do it, then we just want permission to call somebody else.
Yes, ma'am. For fully other sample, um, like I said, I was unaware that the contract ended in October. Um, so I spoke with Kelsey, uh, previously last week, I believe, about the situation. And I let her know that, hey, we're gonna monitor this and as necessary, we can possibly add additional resources to help facilitate those transports or move ambulances from one area to another, to help out with those transportation needs.
Instead of monitoring, can we be like proactive, the way it's already put in place? But we don't wanna run across a situation where in, in, in the process of monitoring, we have a patient there for eight to nine hours and right at home to the workers at the hospital.
That's not always necessarily the case.
But that's what we're here for now.
Sometime of those, sometimes those patients are accepted locally and we're able to get those patients out immediately. Um, it's the transfers going specifically to New Orleans and great distances.
Blackbeard.
Blackbeard at night. Um, after, I'd say nine, ten, eleven o'clock at night, that takes the ambulance out great, great distances. Um, takes an ambulance out at least four or five hours, as well as in the next day, you can have an additional ambulance come in service that is a basic level ambulance. It can come transport the E C patients with a fresh crew, fresh in the daylight. Less, less risk of harm happening to a patient or the ambulance crew or anybody like that. Um, now, I understand what comes into play with staff at the hospital. Completely understand.
So Miss Angela, is it possible that, like, you and I, Patrick and the director of the hospital, have a meeting?
That's, that's fine, but I just, we just need a backup plan and, and one that, that we can probably start working on soon.
So, so.
We can arrange a meeting, that's fine.
Yes, so I, yeah, we, we, ASAP, we have a meeting, all our schedules are pre.
Absolutely. Well, I'll involve our director of operations, um, unfortunately he's out in a, in a private, previous engagement. I'm gonna watch him when he's in here. Um, we'll definitely be more than. Although I'd say we've been here, um, we'll definitely be more than willing to sit and visit with you guys, and whoever else would like to visit, and come with a solution.
I'll free them up.
He'll be out tomorrow.
Oh, you guys before?
I, I will be also, I should be available tomorrow or something.
Was that the delivery?
I have to make sure the staff is going to be here, but.
Well, we, we can talk outside.
Absolutely.
I still want a backup plan, no matter what.
I agree with you.
Turner Jones, you'll review the contract.
Yes, and I've, I've worked with this, this time, and reviewing it over the last month, to address the issues. And there, there is some, some board things there, but one of the things was addressing the immediate concern of the patients in relation to the October, uh, change in services with the previous provider that was transported in these things. And that wasn't in existence at the time that the contract was executed. And so now we have an additional line of services that are included. So we need to talk about, uh, possibly getting those to the contract to deal with this in a way that's efficient and effective, provide services. You know, with a possible value to high quality level service. We want to be able to ensure that our hospital staff and patients can actually get the treatment they need at the time of need.
Thank you very much.
Okay, all right. My brain's a bad.
Okay, I'm having to get back to the motion, there we.
Wait, wait, wait just a minute. Uh, we, we have taken this agenda out of order.
What is it?
Mr., uh, Jay Green, his person had to seem to say something.
Oh, I, I just want some clarity. Going back to the gentleman, he, he illustrated that, he spoke some counseling. So if you listen to him, he said, that's my first time ever hearing the name of the company. Anything about it, I was not here, it was question and answer. I got a right to ask a question, and it was my opinion. I've never stated that I didn't want them coming here. I just was just asking a question about the job to land ratio. That's all I was asking. And I don't know where the other, whatever went transpired, but I never said that I didn't. We, we want revenue. I was just saying, we need to think long term. And it never came before the council. Because reading I said job to land ratio, and I don't want to threaten this fire chief then, because that very building right over there was supposed to be a, a call center. This ring, I was asking the question, it was going to be about eighty jobs or something like that, at fifteen dollars an hour. And that just went away. And all of a sudden, this company came about, and nobody knew nothing about it. So I'm not against economic development. So I just want the whole story to come out. And the young gentleman said that he was on the zoning board. He said, no, the ins and outs. It tells me a whole lot. So what I'm saying is, I'm not against, so I'm not against patents. I'm just stating the obvious. It's supposed to be, we was supposed to have a business that come in, and American attested this.
It was, it was not a call center, it was a baker store, it was like.
But supposed to be eighty jobs over there versus twelve. That's the only thing that I was trying to illustrate. Not trying to prevent business, because we, we need every dollar the city of Bastrop can have. I just was wondering, whatever happened to that business? And then all of a sudden, this gentleman comes in, and this is a company that he's over, he's with zoning. And it, it, that's, that's for another day, but don't come in, I, I just want everybody to know that I'm not against businesses. It was question and answers, and I had questions. That's my first time ever here in another business. First time knowing that he was over it, never to its facility, never came before us. So I was just asking a question. I mean, that's what you're supposed to do when you don't know. And I've been knowing this, known it a long time. I never knew he was over the project. I never knew that they were over there. So don't take it out of context that I don't want businesses to come here. I just want to know. You know, I'm looking at what I said earlier about whatever happened to that other job that was going to come over there. And all of a sudden, they got pushed aside, and all of a sudden, the panel showed them. That's all I was, that's all, that's all I was talking about. And District E, I want, I want this perfectly clear. I'm not against a tax based business to come in Bastrop. I was just asking a question. And for the record, it wasn't even a vote, it was a question and answer. So you can't say I voted against it, because we didn't get the vote on it.
I think, I think, I, I just want to piggyback off of it.
If you give, if you slow down, give me an opportunity to announce the speaker, it helps with the, the recording of the minutes.
You're right, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. D Green.
To piggyback off what Jay Green said, I, I think the problem lies because it's a lot is they did. The land is purchased by a private company, where we fought, where we come, where the disconnect is between the zoning and the city council. Because how it didn't set up, you don't have to come before the council, they can approve that zoning. So if we're going to address the issue, we're going to have to address the issue right then, right there. Because anytime a company come, we do not know, but it go through the, the proper steps. So they go on to the, through the proper steps, and how we, you know, because this was in place. They come in, they go through zoning, zoning approval, then they, they get to enact their business. But if, but if we want to do something different, that's what it started, it started here. Because just like the, the, the solar panel is there now, it went through the proper steps. And then that's how they, you know, they end up putting the solar panels in. So we going, going to address something, we going to address like how the process work again. It's a flawed process, that's it.
Let me, uh, just, I'm going to finish up real quick. Same company we're speaking about. Don't have an occupation license. I don't know how they got it. We got to stop that. They don't have, they don't have an occupation license. They have to fill out an occupation permit. I requested it from the clerk. Clerk, clerk tells me, there's no application. There's no occupation license. What is going on in Bastrop? Okay? These same people, the young man that spoke, sit on the zoning board. We, the, the young lady that spoke last month, that she got a beautiful farm out there by, by the great young butt land. We cannot afford, and I'm not arguing, I'm being specific, because they say I'm mummified sometime, I want to be clear. We cannot afford to have solar panels, like Mr. Green said, that's a number, they're going to either buy a land for growth. Second, it's a health hazard. Yeah, I said it, I don't research it, I put it up, in a meeting. Perfect fact, skin capture, with the whole type of rage coming in. Put them out. Tell me, somebody tell me, do anybody in here know where another solar panel farm sit within a population of people? Somebody tell me. I might, I, 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 I mean, and I'm also, I'm just trying to get some clarity, because I care about Bastrop. I'm a native of Bastrop. And I see it because I care. And just to show you one other thing, this same zoning boards, this same permit by chief, called it out, so he brought it out. Built the yellow and green apartments over there. Those people have one door in. Or two, one door in, and I've seen that since, uh, my shotgun house had two doors, one in and one out the back. And I was a child. Now this is going to make sense for the zoning board to play into the, uh, the zoning board, the fire chief, who, the holding board, who all have these go to procedure. How is this happening in Bastrop? What are you all trying to do to Bastrop? I love Bastrop. What about you all? And it's ridiculous, continue, let this continue on, and I, I'm, 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 I'm hurting, I'm saying one more thing. International paper, since he brought it up, listen, listen on, now don't be wrong. In twenty seventeen, international paper, I wish you'd hear that exactly. Sold that, all, all international property for ten dollars. That's against the N I trust law, but that's going to start when, when we get there, okay? Then, Perfect Land Development paid eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to total one board. And then just turn around and sold it back to total one for six hundred thousand dollars, seven hundred thousand dollars. They're playing social game in our community, and it got us stopped. We would never be able to bring Bastrop forward and be prosper, a prosperous community with this type of activity going on, where you got the fire chief, you got the zoning, you got the state fire chief. And anybody else that participated in it, they just stopped.
Mr. Bradford, so you saying you don't, you don't like, you don't like those new apartments?
No, new apartment don't have a one door in and one door out. I mean, I mean, you go to one door, you can't get back, there's no backdoor out. What is that? My shotgun house. Well, yeah, that's what I tried to.
Uh, what was the next item?
Oh, oh, I, I, I would do, I like to make a motion. I like to make a motion. I like to make a motion.
We got a pretty fire chief, I know he following all the regulations.
Oh, I would like to think.
It, it gotta be, it's gotta be, it's gotta be a solid block, because he, he, he.
I didn't ask all the people that have to go through, actually nobody did, but that's the procedure. I, I didn't say anybody getting on, but I don't say I got bad everybody. Okay, but anyway, I like to make a motion. That the attorney prepare, prepare a order, a temporary order. Hopping all, stopping all solar panel projects from being built inside the city limit of Bastrop. Let me repeat this. I like to act them, I turn it, prepare an order, city order. Prevent it, temporary, we don't say temporary, but we can always sit down and, and sit down and see what's going on. But what I see right now, this is real bad. Okay, a temporary order to stop all solar panel farms for building any property inside the city limit of Bastrop.
So, so, Mr. Bradford, you want them to, you want them to stop the.
I'm talking about, they don't hear about it. I ain't talking, it is so.
But I'm speaking.
I'm talking about solar panel farm.
Okay, uh, so, so this, this don't have the effect on ones that purchase.
Oh, the ones already up, you know, we can do by that, I'm hoping the one that want to come cross here, cross down here, cross the street. See, they, they test the water the first time, you got away with, got caught up. I, I ain't going, I ain't going to cry about what they got going, but I'm sure crying about what they trying to.
So if you say, you said that the ones that got the solar panel right behind city hall, that don't have occupation license?
I don't have occupation license. They don't have a, a permit. Bring me the occupation license.
What if they?
Oh, 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 bring me, he say he had the doctor, show me occupation license.
And they went to zoning, this, don't zoning give the permit?
Zoning give the permit, they have to fill out an application. I didn't even see occupation license. I didn't request it from the clerk. The clerk told me just earlier tonight, there was no occupation license. And there was no application. Now come on, come on, come on, come on. The zoning people are doing, maybe one minute, I think Mr. Norman may can come up with no doctor, he say he has a doctor.
We need, um, I need point of information.
Sure, sure, go ahead, yes, we'll go ahead, Miss Taff.
Um, Councilman Bradford is saying that the zoning committee is allowing businesses to operate without the proper credentials?
All zoning does is grant the permits for the use of land.
Right, you say that.
That's all they are.
They should came from the chief.
So if, 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 so point of information is all this all, this all, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. So if, if this all zoning doing, then if we do away with zoning, they would have to come before the council? I'm asking, I'm just, I don't know.
Theoretically, if you could do away with zoning, all the land zoning would go before the council.
But I, I, by being in code enforcement, I'm from the, by being in code enforcement, the problem is the special permits that's being allowed. That, see, back in two thousand, this, this, I don't know what I'm looking to. Back in two thousand and fifteen or something, they came up with some kind of exception clause that allowed the board to grant special permits to different individuals. Now that's the loophole right there. If, if you really want to come before the council, what you have to do, I'm not attorney, talk to the attorney, but you have to take away their ability to do the special permit. If it's going to be a person, special permit, it should come in for the council. Anything else that's already just, ain't cleared, it should already be, it can be approved. But when you start dealing with special permits, that's why we don't know nothing about it. Just like a couple of other businesses come into Bastrop, and it's a shame you find out in the streets, because they've been given special permits. That is the loophole that needs to be closed. That, that, and that is another thing, so Attorney Jones, you shake your head in agreement with, 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 um, with what I'm saying, because that is the biggest sticking point, is the process. And the process happened to be with those special permits that's being allowed without even coming before the council. And matter of fact, when you, when they give the special permit, think about it, we need, they bring it to us. It's already been approved, special permit, but legally, the council before, back in two thousand and fifteen, they, they voted to give the people the, of the power to grant special permits. So if they can give you the power, the, the council can give you the power, they shouldn't even take it away from.
Okay, Turner Jones. Uh, with this discussion, at this point, the zoning board, board adjustments, all of these groups exist for a purpose. So knowing all of the zoning laws and requirements, is that something that you would recommend for council members to, to study all of the zoning requirements and just bypass? These boards are in place for a reason, and one reason was to take the political aspect out of it. And the other reason was to, uh, to make it easier in compliance with what those areas are zoned for. I realize you have a motion on the.
I have a motion that we just put a temporary halt on issue any permit. I perfectionally, they don't have one now. Anybody can say, I don't see how you going to operate, I don't care what the zoning board say, if the city issued occupation licenses. You have to apply for occupation license. Now, we haven't gave that right to the zoning board, uh, well, we may as well dismiss ours from up here. Okay, occupation license is issued by the city. Once they get that approval to zoning, if it's legal done. Done, then they have to apply for occupation license at the clerk office. They have to tell how good their annual revenues expected. I mean, these people often, you, you got no mom and pop on the, on the square, paying taxes and sales taxes, and these people operating free. Now, most time, they don't operate. Enjoy their living, taking up the community. I, I have a motion, I just want a temporary order prepared. I, this council tonight, until we can dig into this further, we can meet with the company, we can see why they feel it should be here, and why didn't they come through proper procedure, we got to meet with our five marshals. Because a lot of these, these things that can continue going. So everybody over there knows the apartment, they're the same people. Over there knows apartment over there, is a health hazard. If I had a relative that burned in there tonight, I assume see the pastor, because they are liable to operate. See, we put ourselves into, we, we, we not clear ourselves. We, we make ourselves liable to undermine corruption, what I'm calling.
Hey, Mr. Bradford, is it, is it, is it possible that, that, being that they are set to, I'm assuming they are set to deal on the real property, right? So is it possible, before they break around, they can meet, meet with the council?
Yeah, we'll meet with the council, we want to meet with the council, and we want to meet with the zoning commission and see how this came about. Yeah, sure, that's what my tax report, right, until we get some clarity.
So, so can, is it possible, you think, it could, I get a table until we meet with them?
No, 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 we, we need to put all the claims, they may say they own the property, look up the mic, that nice open, running down the street. They have movement. No, we need to put all in place.
Hey, okay.
Don't give them our power to stop. We got, right now, Westwood, I'm, right now, Washington Parish is doing the same thing. Right now, they're not lying, solar panel nowhere is a parish of Washington as of last week. Their boy, Jay Mitchell, well, the attorney, got a, a, ordered a temporary ban.
But being, being, Mr. Norman, that walk, that, possibly, ask them, before y'all break around, can you meet with the, the council? Can we meet with the company?
He might, he might not. He say he own that property, he didn't say he don't have that property.
I have a point of information, thank you.
You can't tell me if it's sad, but you own it, right?
Just, just a question. Um, Councilman Bradford is saying there are no occupational licenses that have been issued. So can businesses operate without the proper paperwork?
Attorney Jones?
I think that's it. But then, all they, they're not operating that good on, and this feeling, process, procedures.
I'm talking about the other company, I'm just asking. He saying nobody got occupation.
They don't have one over here, and they don't have one over there yet. I don't guess they got this little Mike Duffy letter yet, a guy copy that, getting them approved from the zoning board. It's not properly done. I know Mr. Norman, I know well, man of charity, but it's not properly done. It's not in divisions of this community where we need to stop here tonight. So this week, they, before we meet again, they can have that kind of stuff going, we don't know what they're doing. They, they operating over here without an occupation permit. Why make them be, let's, let's stop them now before it go, before they sit down and discuss it. Why make them be, let's, let's stop them now before it go, before they sit down and discuss it.
When you say operate, what, please clarify?
They operate right, uh, right behind the police station here, that is an operation.
Operating how?
They got solar panels going over there.
What, maybe, what is going on?
No, 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 don't tell them what you doing over there, you can tell them better, I can't. You come tell, you tell
You said they're over, they're operating, what are they doing?
They got, they got solar panel, they gotta get this one over there. You know, man, y'all know it.
Not to that, but, yes, no, but, my role is, I was trying to, you said they're over, what are they doing?
They selling energy over there, they got a solar panel factory over there, selling energy, what you doing? Or they getting prepared to sell energy, let's say that, Mr. Norman knows, he's there, he knows, now he want to get
Okay, that's been a lot of time.
Yeah, we have a lot of time, but, 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 I want the motion to die. Like, no, back, somebody, somebody
Okay, go ahead, this is D. Green.
This, this the way, well, the people
This is D. Green. There, is it, is it, one hundred, can, can America order, uh, a, a stop of a special, uh, a special permit into the council address? Can she order a stop on it?
No.
The council fee, what, what would you do?
Once you have a permit that's mint brand and somebody's reasonable relies on it and used still, and is in the process of doing it, you, you're subject to the thing that you previously issued, because somebody has acted detrimental on that reliance that they have a permit.
So we can be sued with what you
They don't have occupation license.
They don't have it.
Uh, that's
Okay, that, I guess when you talk about the legality, then
Right, yeah, I mean, you can issue a moratorium on anything that went forward, which is what, uh, the law's on first history did.
Okay, well, stop, if, if you know what you're getting, you try.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've had frequent conversation, I mean, it's
That, that's what I, I go with, thank you, Mr. Bradford.
You can issue a moratorium on eating new projects, that's what we're, looking back, you can't go back, hey, yeah, it's all that rely, just what's things here, you rely on what's out, they issue to you, and now we're gonna promote you. You are gonna put yourself in danger for it.
We are not allowing occupation license, we not promoting anything, what they got, they can have. But they believe the occupation license, we have to prove that to the city, don't. I'm asking how all occupation license, that's only, we gonna call, I'm, that zoning committee can be called before us, because they doing a whole lot of new thing. That's only committee, he sits over there, and he bothered up there, and he knew better to do what he did. But he, look what, some people think black people in this community is sleeping, and that's my right, I sleep, I live two blocks down the street from this, up the middle. Okay, we're not on the street, don't you gotta try to rap it, get out. I'm gonna tell you how I feel about that, I ain't, I'm not telling about, that was, that was un, un, unnecessary, that was under hearing to do what you are.
Uh, Attorney Jones, uh, the best solution to this, when we talked about the, the legality, the loophole, is with the, uh, zoning committee. Now you can, you can, we can do orders or whatever by the zoning board, and have them not to write any more special permits, because you can't, you can't go back and tell this company, I see what you saying, that you can't put it in because it's already been approved, but what we can do this day forward, is you can put it, you can write up an order for the, uh, zoning committee, to demand that they, when it comes to special permits, that there's no more special permits until they came before the council and worked out some of the galas or what's going on.
So what you can do is, is you can move into, into sixteen point one one of the zoning, which is the, the book that you referenced the other day. We can move into sixteen point one one A, you can move into their, uh, variances, and that's really what you're looking at, variances on more special permits, whereby they would just simply recommend they'd issue a report, and the final action would be taken by the council. There are certain, certain things that the council takes final action on, and certain things that the board is authorized, that's, you can move some of those things around. Something like that, a variant or a special, uh, permit, you can move to where they issue a report or recommendation and finding, and then the council is to take action on the recommendation or finding or planning, so. So you still have your authoritative
Yeah, it's going, I don't, I don't think we can go back and, I don't think we can go back and, uh,
Hold on, hold on, don't go back, let's say the brother, right here today. Let me share something, you know. You telling me this city government do not have authorization to stop issuing permit, occupation of permit, are you telling me that?
I'm not talking about occupation.
Well, I'm talking about occupation, they keep talking about zone, what the zoning did, the zoning that did, they're like, they gonna come before you and address this council with what they did, but I'm talking about occupation permit. You need an occupation permit to run a business inside the city of Bastion. Unless you need special right there, and they do not need that. Okay, we gotta know how much money, how much money we getting out of this as a city, man, let's talk about revenue. They building a fourteen, four million dollar operation, that's just a huge figure. If that and black and white, that we receiving anything from when they sell that stuff, the energy, uh, what, what are we gonna receive from? We gonna, we gonna, we gonna have eight, maybe eight good people not know the law, their personal friends or nothing, don't get it wrong.
You have a motion?
Yeah.
Was there a second? Let's move on to the next item.
Okay, no second, be a guy. I see you, I see you approach it.
Uh, okay, that brings us to where, on, um, E, audit report requesting update on forensic audit requests.
Yes, uh, we, I guess, I guess the council can stand with this, we did request that the attorney prepare a letter, give us a physical for, uh, to file with the Inspector, Officer Inspector General, and we had heard a thing, it been two months, I hadn't seen a copy of the letter, I didn't know, what's the letter, what's the status?
So the resolution is reported to the office of Inspector General. The Inspector General's office is not giving anything of a formal opinion back, they have to lay back.
Do you have a copy of the letter you prefer to him, sir, that's what I'm asking.
Could you allow him an opportunity to complete his statement?
Correct, I can get your copy of the letter.
Okay, that's what I asked for, shoot, here tonight.
Okay, so the office inspector general did inform me that
Inform you if you have a letter, you have a letter when you submit, yes.
There is a letter.
Okay, if you have a letter, they responding back to you.
Correct.
Okay, could you prepare those, and we might, because we got an officer, Inspector General, off, very, off, Inspector General, can you do it, you can't? I, I need to see the letter when you made the request, and I'd like to see the response from them, from your request.
They have not given us a response, if the response that I received on the phone
Okay, on the phone, what?
Because you have to call down there and confirm.
No, no, we going to write, Charles.
So the response that I received was, is that the office inspector general is not in the, their purview to oversee, there's a specific section for bringing the audit request, and that is with the legislative, uh, auditor, and we previously made requests of legislative auditor.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you, you just have
Well, when, if they, when they send me their response, did they send more?
Well, send me yours, send me yours, and I will, that's a couple, that's the one to you. But I'd like to see what you sent.
That's why I confirm every time I send one somewhere, every time I confirm when I send one somewhere.
Well, I know, but you should have, I'll, I'll catch you.
Okay, let's move on. Okay, next item will be your request.
Request for, find another audit report. This year happened down, it was due December thirty first, twenty twenty four, we have two extensions, I talked to the, uh, legislative order. First reason, we were short ahead. That's a shame. God, we gonna conduct the city government, short ahead. Next request were, I didn't even have any
Insurance.
That, uh, yeah, the insurance had, hadn't been prepared, they were no something, not from the insurance. Mary, you, 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 when we hired Mrs. Flower and her team, and, 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 uh, Mr. Maxwell, you started getting the same down and say, we doing this, we gotta get it done, because we gonna have it done, you, you, you made a public statement, you would have it done by December thirty first. But this year, I'll ask you, it haven't been done yet, we coming up to, we coming up to budget time again, we gonna run it to the same circumstance again, uh, my question again. Well, it's the status of the audit board, I will let, I, I will test if Mr. Maxwell will send us something tonight. But I, I, I didn't get it, is that, is that, Mr. Secretary?
I mean, Mr. Mr. Maxwell is working on that information, the administration has not had an opportunity to address the findings. Um, the, there was a delay. The actuary request that was brought before the council was tabled. Has been a massive change with the insurance, because Vantage went away. So when the actuary started working on it, it posed a whole different set of circumstances. So let me say that to, to set the record straight and reference that. We can all project, we also have to, to be prepared for standard deviation, things happen, things change. The size of the airport grant, magnitude of that, over two million dollars. But it is in process, and we are not under none of the facts, and that's, and that's all I have to say about that.
Okay, thank you.
Let's move on to, uh, we've been here two hours, and
Mary, hold up, Chairperson, you know, let's, let's be respectful of each other, we can't just jump, uh, this is a city council meeting. This is a mayor meeting with the board audit. You want to speak on something, we have to allow, we have to respect what you like, I, I won't be disrespectful of me, and I won't be disrespectful of you. Let's give Mr. Bradford a chance to finish.
Mr. Bradford's had two hours on this agenda alone, the staff has been
All good, you can take it. Maybe we'll leave, right, you know, I don't know. Yeah, yeah, well, I'm gonna choose to, man, whatever, but I should give my letter around here. No, don't get me started, please.
Okay. We will be doing any announcements, we're going back to the regular agenda.
Yeah, she, she not gonna let me say that back, I'm gonna move on.
Two hours.
I'm, 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 I'm gonna get along, my two hours.
Well, uh, let's go on to any announcements.
Um, I do, um, on morning, okay, next, well, Thursday, the figure, no, we're going in March twentieth, at five thirty. Um, Morhan John has changed the ER physician group. Uh, we have a group called ACP now, um, we're happy to have them. So far, it's been a great experience for patients, so we're gonna have a town hall meeting in the walnut room. I said Thursday the twentieth at five thirty, give you opportunity, I think, to meet some of the ACP staff. They want to tell the community what changes in our region community, what they offer, so it's gonna be a very good, uh, informational session. So whoever can come out, will come out on Thursday, walnut room at five thirty.
That's what basis that, three?
That's a thousand, five thirty, cafeteria at Morhan John.
All right, three, what date is that?
Um, the twentieth, and they have an entire presentation that they're gonna see.
Yeah, I, I, I remember, man, we, like you say, everybody didn't, didn't have, had to make a, you know, we miss number one, we need to talk about the right in the city. Number, can I get fifteen more minutes? We need to talk about the right in the city. See on the general, yeah, we got, maybe fifteen, I can take that up.
Okay, when you, when you, when you ask, taking out all these doors with number two.
Yeah, 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 by, by any on there, I can make a mistake, but can we go back, please?
Was the request to take everything you said?
Go, go ahead, go, go, go ahead, yes, you go ahead, if you want to do same for others, if you don't want to, that's, that's your mental.
Go ahead, wait, I, first of all, time.
I don't want to tell you, that's what you do, man.
Go ahead, what does the record say, Miss, Miss, this is number two, and you itemized those alphabets that
I just asked for correction, I just, I just asked for correction, man, so, you can say yes or no, Mr. Bradford. Yes or no?
I don't answer to you, uh,
See, like you're answering, I'm just asking you a question.
This gentleman here for the blind, there was someone that requested to be here before.
Here's the key, please.
But I'm here, I, I'm gonna do it, but Now, you can make a mistake, I can't do it. I said, well, they gave you two hours, I look, I move in. Okay, you got the four, Mr. Bradford, you want, you want to talk about the light, yeah, I want to talk about the light, go ahead. Last meeting we had, the first meeting we had, especially when we were, we talked about light, we were trying to appoint a chairman, uh, uh, get that right moving in this community, you know?
Speaking of Mike.
Uh, we were trying to get right, moving in the community, and we spoke about it, this back here on the agenda, again, I apologize to people listening here. But I think each council will receive a package at the last special meeting about lights, and that, and that district, it was about their district. I, I guess the question is, when I was gonna put this in proper procedure? You know, when was, was that proper procedure, establish this right committee? You know, we, that's what they were kicking around, around town, and the town was so bad. And we still here, at council, we left these officials for the governor, Mr. Lee, and when these officials come up, we had, we don't know nobody. We don't want to take no action, we got volunteers, work, willing to work with us, and we came from, we committed, and, and organized according to the child, I think Mr. Jones was trying to work it up. What, why are we, are we gonna put this off for another six months? I mean, I, I, I get my question here. Anybody got a suggestion about bright other than myself? No one on the council?
Well, I mean, I, I have, I have more suggestions, actions, suggestions, actions, because I'm be ready to do projects, I'm married, so I mean, I'm trying to put my money to work, and I think that's probably other people's intentions, they find projects, and I've heard of the council member saying a lot of things, we just gotta get them in action, which I know I'm about to start on my, I've started on my, um, my progress, so. That's what I can say to this, right?
Thank you, Mr. Bradford.
No, go ahead, uh, Mr. Bradford, okay, we talked about black, talk about the baby form today. Black, we all messed up, because we gotta be mindful of what we do with the fifty thousand dollars, because the money was given to each district. Right, so when we talk about appropriate money for each district, that's for your district. So gotta be careful, because, and, and I don't discriminate against nothing, I, I be straight down the, straight, straight shooter. So if I'm gonna be up here fussing with the mayor about spending money that's not appropriated, cross rated, then we need to make sure that if we don't do that, then we don't do it. So if the money is spent for black, it's given for black, and you just say, the city look awful. Let's spend the money for black. Let's, you can't cross reference, I can't, I shouldn't be able to give it to, I give my question to Mr. Green, because that's District B. They gave me fifty thousand dollars for my district, he got fifty thousand dollars for his district, and it's for black. Any other stuff is not, yeah, I, 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 it's for black.
Excuse me.
It's for black.
Excuse me.
Okay, point that, okay, go ahead.
It was not just allocated for bright, it was allocated for anything in your district that you feel would be a beneficial in your district, like uh, Robinson Way, uh, uh, any, anything you want to do within your district, it's just not for bright. We got two hundred thousand dollars for cleanup, two hundred thousand dollars for cleanup and putting elevated houses back on the road, just sitting there.
I don't think it was worth it like that, though.
Yeah, 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 it was, it was. Two, yeah, you have a word like that, Mr. Green.
Oh, well, if, if it is, I'm just saying, that's, uh, but actually, it was for, for my, I understand it was for bright, for light. You know, so if you want to, for bright, bright in the community, black, bright, whatever, I thought it was for black. So if we gonna talk about black and dirtiness of the city, I'm just saying, because, you know, I came up here the other day, the last meeting, they gave that food truck five thousand dollars that was supposed to been went to Dotson Park, and I was, mayor, you can, please
Wait, that's something that has been put out of the public domain that is untrue.
What my fault?
I had the way I, I, that is untrue, that is absolutely untrue.
Oh, hold up, hold up, hold up, back to my, back to my point, before I was interrupting, see, I, see, respect go both ways.
That's exactly right.
So you, 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 you know, you, just like you ruled Mr. Bradford out of order. I respect you, I got, I got a lot of respect from you, but you have to respect my point of view. You got your point of view, you to cherish, I'm speaking, I was trying to illustrate a point. I'm saying if we gonna hold you to the standard, we gotta hold ourselves to the standard, and I stand on what I said, because I looked at what it was for. It was for Dotson Park, and it was used for a food truck. Now, I said it was not used properly, that's why I'm getting that about this black money. We have to use it for, in a manner that was proper. We have to use it for, in a manner that was appropriate. So if I wanna hold you accountable, I wanna hold everybody accountable. So what you saying is, I tell you what. I'm ninety-nine percent sure that I'm right, because I looked at it, I got it. You know, you may have went back and, they changed the dynamics of it, but the content of the law was for Dotson Park, and I got the numbers. And I also got, I don't want to say the car, but that, that, that's, that's here, not there. My point was, I was not trying to get into, let the confrontation with you, Mayor. I was just illustrating my point. I was illustrating the point that the money that we got for each district, let's be mindful that the city is dirty, and we should spend that money trying to enhance the city of faster, that's all I was getting at.
Okay, now, for the record, I, I'm going to say this, this has been put in the public domain.
Before you said it, I can make a point, it's, it's, I can, I can, I can, I can make a statement.
Uh, hold up, Mr. Bradford, let it finish. The, uh, that was the P grant. I worked with Adrian Fisher and Senator Jackson. We have compliance issues associated with the use of those funds. That is not given to a food truck, I, I, I make that a bodily clear. That was done to hit safety. Information out to the children, I have a report that's going on that, so.
I have a report right here, Country Boys Entertainment, food truck, five thousand dollars, there it is right there. The food truck is on the background, that is a food truck.
That money was not given for a food truck.
What did that say, Mr. D?
That was given to a nonprofit organization.
Excuse, can I?
And it was clear, Representative Fisher, it was, we had two tables, each one of you.
It says, it says, Country Boys Entertainment Outreach, five thousand, it says right here, I got it.
I'm not disputing that, but it was not the food truck that were there, well, then.
Well, maybe not, maybe it's a cartoon, it look like a food truck, I mean, it's a holiday, it's a food truck.
Okay, look, the mayor, right, I got a little bit of order, let it be ordered, or.
Don't make me look like I'm not telling the truth.
No, don't make me look like I'm not telling the truth.
I got documentation right here.
We had two employees that stayed, and a volunteer, and myself, and each one of you got an invitation after the Christmas parade to disseminate this information on safety for holiday season. Now, that, that's the name of the company, Country Boys, but the vendors that were there were on their own. And I got the record to reflect that, because I have to submit a report, my initial thing was to do a start the school thing. That didn't happen, because we didn't have a budget. So it forced me into having to find something to do for the children, because the grant is quite specific on how the bugs ought to be treated. And to put that in the public domain, I actually had a food truck to call me and say, where my five thousand dollars?
And, and, and Mayor, can I, can I go say something, when she got to, it's called P, what's it called, P P E? P, P P E, what is it, P P E?
Protection, protect, it's P.
What, what, okay, P P, now, Mayor, there's no statement as, now, you have to do the right. You, we, we was asking about the twenty-five thousand, you said he gave you half the first time, a, a, a half for second, I don't know, right? Okay, now, you was trying to give the five thousand dollars, uh, well, you gave five thousand dollars to the food truck. You gave, oh, let me finish, let me finish, then you gave five thousand, you were trying to give five thousand dollars to Robinson Williams, or, 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 you were talking to the show, I let P P, what, you just said it was specific, allocated for Dotson Park. And, and, and I called Mr. Locke, I'm gonna say, so, Mr. Locke, Mr. Locke, did you say that money was allocated to Dotson Park, that's my district?
I talked to him.
And I'm gonna be there right there, I, I talked to Representative Fisher.
I know what I'm doing in terms of the law.
Answer me.
Most of the stuff. Your, your, okay, the particular, the particular event that Mary is speaking about, it wasn't, it wasn't per se food trucks. You had food trucks out there, I was out there in a, in a, sound, uh, costume. But it was, it was an event. I don't have all the details about the event, but it wasn't just given to a food truck, say, you had food trucks out there selling food or giving away food wanting to, so I could, but, and as you added, it was, the grant itself was for.
You got your glass, so read that, what they say? Did they say Country Boys Entertainment?
It does.
And what's the bottom, what they say?
Holiday Food Truck Festival.
Thank you.
Okay, he had a part in it, that part that we played.
No, 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 I'm going by what's on record, I was realizing, what did they say? This city, and it's got Mayor Betty Offenbaum's signature on the box.
You're right.
So go tell me that I can't see.
You can call Representative Fisher, that was clear, that's where the money, that's money I pursued to help the children.
But no, I'm saying, you said that I was, I'm not fussing, I'm not fussing. Cause you said that I was, you said I was not telling the truth.
You said I was, I paid five thousand dollars.
It says it right here, read it again, dear Green.
Okay, order, let's go back to this agenda, because I know what's true and what's not. Those food trucks that were there were there independently. Okay, let's go back to the agenda. Uh, I accept previous minutes, regular meeting February thirteenth and special meetings February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five.
I'd like to make a motion, accept those with the necessary corrections.
Seven.
Okay, proper move in second for corrections.
They would not, they, they are called, what do you call them?
Sapshot.
Sapshot, they're not competing minutes, and if they go, otherwise they won't prepare to read them. But I'd like to accept the necessary approval, uh, 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 other minutes, we'll come later, we have to, if they were given a, a problem in their right, illustrate the food truck on that, whatever you have on. But that's a meeting we're in. You know what I'm saying, I'm not food truck in a minute, in a minute, but it was spoken, it was, I can get a full of them. Mr. Green, Mr. Green, that's a little right, one hundred percent.
What was on that, what was on our invoice?
I, I think that.
What it said?
Mr. Green, you want to say right, I'd like to make a motion to accept, uh, fifteen, I mean, February thirteenth and twenty-fifth, fifth minute with the necessary correction.
Yeah, I, 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 uh, step and take this off of the vote.
It's all in favor?
Ah.
Number six, consideration of an action on reports of committees pointing on the government body, finance committee report.
We can get that, you know, the, hey, here's the grant.
Hey, finance committee.
Oh, oh, I, I, I agree, I, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm sitting there, that's, we didn't get to five thirty. I, I really didn't plan to, but we didn't get to see the financial statement that we had requested in the past. I mean, we got to look at them, I got three pages, thirty-two pages, I'm, we got to look this through before we start, we, uh, that's not, not appropriate, what we asked, but I, I, I don't have a motion, maybe from that one motion, I don't know.
It's, you can remake the motion on, on finance.
It's just, it's just an acknowledgement, you look at the deals.
Can we move on?
Okay, B, planning and zoning committee, nobody's here.
You know, Blackman?
No, he's not.
Oh, oh, oh.
Seven, reports of city officials or employees required by law or action of the governing body.
Uh, in, in a minute, Mayor, um.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, you say, ma'am. Ms, Ms. Tapping asks for a list of citations, the, uh, updated citations, and as well as the update on Eastside School. I can go, let me go to the minutes of the series.
Okay, I don't dispute that, and I do recall her asking for, for citations.
She requests a total of citations issued by total importance.
And, and it was told that it was coming, didn't it?
Uh, a number of letters that he sent out, he can, uh, provide you with that information. But as far as citations were not.
I didn't say anything.
You, you, I don't believe in the citations for issue, but he had a list of letters, is it? Mr. Mike Guff.
I'll write that.
Okay, you have, um, the request was for a list of citations, but you have a list of letters that were mailed in the last, would you give an update?
We put out, uh, I think ten letters today. We put out three or four last month, from, it seemed like it was, a month, it's, uh, January.
How many, how many in the last year have progressed to environmental court?
None.
So for the record, we paid twelve hundred dollars a month for over a year. But no environmental court cases. We have properties, um, I know in my district that are horrible. We have landowners that they don't want to do anything, so we should have progressed further with this. So the letters go out and nothing, then it, process stops. So we have to do something to clean our city. We're doing nothing. So why end the progression to the next stage? I mean, I'm getting hammered, because somebody's not doing somebody's job, I mean, I'm not saying it's you, but our city is guilty. So what, what's the problem?
I need solutions, I want to.
If we were elevate to the level of sending people to environmental court, that would be the solution, people who, who do not want to pay money.
Exactly.
So you have to put fines on them, so we have a process, it's just not happening, it's not being worked through. I gotta be stopping at number one.
Just like that, I, I might just ask a free person. Uh, would it be helpful to you, if we, if we could ever get to commit it on, someone to help you know, maybe help move this project?
The biggest thing about this is, we got, I got cleaners, y'all get called all the time. About what needs to be done, I know what needs to be done, I know what houses need to be tore down, but there's got to be some money involved, I'm telling you.
Well, we got two hundred fifty thousand dollars for cleaning. In the budget, twenty-four, twenty-five budget, we got plenty of money. We ain't even got no money showing. We got two hundred fifty thou, two hundred fifty thousand dollars in twenty-four, twenty-five budget, for cleaning up property, dilapidate property, put back on the, put back on the tax roll.
That was a budget?
Yeah, two hundred, I mean, what shit I got with me, I, I mean, I showed you at the meeting, we got two hun, two hundred thousand dollars for that again, twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five budget. I let, it, it, even listed on the L R P, uh, uh, that money too, that two hundred thousand to put back, to clean up, dilapidate property, and lock it. We don't have a money problem, that's just gone. I won't let you go. That's why I had to put the red dot, I won't let you go. I'll turn it down. But, but, oh, I, one other, look, Mr. Mike Guff, you say you sent out ten letters today? You sent out ten, you sent out ten letters today?
At least ten. At least ten.
At least ten, what, four, thirteen, division on it, in that process? Oh, thank you, Mr. Mike Guff, I'll show that in a second. What, what do you mean, did?
You, you, you asked.
I didn't, I didn't know, it worked.
You, you asked a solution, so is, is there any ideas you have in mind, what we can do to help you?
Well, and I'm gonna be so honest with you, I think the process is too long. Because you, you're talking about environmental court, all right, I send a letter out, give it ten days, and then I bring it back to the environmental court, and she gives them the judge gives them thirty days.
But you say it hasn't happened in over a year.
Right, but the issue is, is that when she don't, then we, we put a lien against her, so that's actually money issue. And the thing about it is, it needs to be a shorter process. And then going into environmental court, I've got fifteen days to get a letter to them prior to going to the court. The process is the most.
Yeah, but, but, the, the reason I asked, because what, what I, I don't think that, you know, if, if we at the moment, we should just, Frank, I think we should work together, so if you have.
Ever been, I, one hundred percent, cause when you called me the other day, I said, I, I had to send a letter to what, yours.
Yeah.
And, and it, not just that, the, the, I gotta talk about, and there's trash, I have the name in the trash. And go, you know, it's gotta be investigated by the police, I don't have the power to investigate.
But, but, just, can, can, hold on, wait, if, if, if we, I know everybody's not, everybody gonna kind of respond different, you know, some of them say, sure, I don't have the money to do so, or, sir, uh, uh, some never respond at all, you know what I mean? Okay, if we could get a list of people who are willing to be assist with the cleanup, that we have the money we have, if you may, let's say you write Charles Bradford, Charles Bradford, your, your property falling, and we asked you to take care, I don't have the money, Mr. Mike Guff, I, I don't know, I'll respond to you. I don't have the money, Mr. Mike Guff, but we have a, we have a program, would you be willing to, if we clean it up, and, and put it back on the tax roll, or and, 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 I mean, trying to communicate with some of the people will communicate with you, some of them just don't know we out here.
Right, honestly, we do that.
Yeah, you know.
And then clean it up and then put it against the property.
With, with, but, but I'm saying, if they give you permissions, we don't have to go to, uh, the, the courts. The courts is a long process, I don't think the court.
I'm worried about anything we're gonna do.
Yes, sir.
That's just a suggestion, I mean, you know, I'm just leaving out.
If you don't mind, when you, when you run across the houses, it's an issue deep, like, if you and I work together to get them, if I gotta hook the contact to people, I don't, I I really don't wanna keep, you know, kicking the can, I wanna get it done, so if I can help you in a way, let's get it done.
I hard can't agree, which is.
That's why I can't agree.
I got, I got a point there.
Go ahead, Mr. Chamberlain.
It does. So you sent out ten letters, you sent out letters last month?
I, I, yeah, I did.
I'm telling you, I sent money out, sent letters out last month, month before last? Okay, it's a four-year process. So, Ms. Tapping asked a question, what you, you said it's a long process. But we never getting past the first stage. What are you doing about, once you send a letter out, what is the next step, and then what is the next step? Because the only thing I ever hear is a letter, a letter, a letter. The last process is getting them to environmental court, then having them to do something. But if you just sending out letters, if you're not sending nothing to the environmental judge, then, I, I, I'm just curious, you keep saying letters, you sent out letters, stay great. You sent out letters, six months ago, we talked about it, so what's the next step after letters? What have you done after a letters?
Well, after we do letters, we, it's, it's a process that we turn it over, and it's a third party cleaning up our city.
Wait, hold on, hold on for a minute, let me back up.
You backing up into.
I'm, I'm backing right back up to what I'm coming to you, so, I'm not talking about cleaning, I'm talking about getting into environmental court, once you send them a letter. What do you do, what is your next step? Before they go to environmental court? What have you done to get them in environmental court? You have? Okay.
Mr. Attorney Joe, would you speak to the process? The letter goes out. To get them into environmental court, citation has to be issued. Just talk about, and, and I think we've been spending so much time on problems and downgrading the city. And, and, and it appears that nobody ever wants to say anything good about the city, but I see good things. And we, we focus on the problem without looking at possibilities for solutions. Attorney, would you speak to that, Stephen?
The process of sending it to environmental court? The process of sending it to environmental court is, is that you give them a notice that they're in violation of the ordinance. The specific violation that's occurring. Then they need to remedy the situation or appear in environmental court and explain to the judge why this is that way.
I can point to information, and I think this is a valid question, not being out of the, you're the attorney, right? Environmental man, now, why would we have, you explain to the environmental officer how the process is, and he's responsible for enforcing, the word code enforcement. He's responsible for enforcing the codes, but you have to explain. And that should be one-on-one, he should already be familiar with the process. So I'm kind of confused, if, why would you be asking a question, and he should be the one that carries out the duties? So if you don't know the duties, how can you carry out the duty? I'm just, I'm just, just a question, because he should know the step process, pro step by step. So why would you, why would you have to answer for him, because that is, if, if you're on the job, you should know your job.
There's, there's, that's why I explained that, is there's a handout that came with the environmental award, that says, and a flowchart graph exactly how each one of them works, there's several different types of violations. It goes all the way down even through the legal process, step by step, in a flowchart, I mean, there. It goes all the way down even through the lien process, step by step in a flowchart, on a daily basis, what you have to do to do it. All those, that flowchart, although not specifically a flowchart in the law, is a flowchart of the state law, which is what our city ordinance adopts and puts in place the bare minimum that we have to provide to somebody, uh, for due process in those violations. It's in a flowchart. There's a whole, there's a whole booklet. In fact, that cell city includes all the council members had it prior to the adoption of the Code Form Act is, that flowchart tells you step by step how to do it. It's very simple. I can write another copy. I have it readily on hand. I kept a copy of this.
So maybe it's, it's gonna be trained. Sound like we're missing the training piece of it.
And that's the only reason I was asking a question about that because if, my point is, if you're a city council member, and you done enacted all legislations to have it done, you done, you done all you can do. So if they're not listening to elected officials, you think they gonna listen to a board? So you just created another board. But we want some action. So we are a board. We done get the laws, these code enforcement. The, the problem is, you know, I would say the root cause analysis. When you look at the problem, it's the problem, it's inaction is the problem. You got laws already on the book. It goes back to code enforcement, enforcing the laws. So if they're not listening to the board, what make us think that they gonna listen to an unelected board that dealing with blight? Because the, you, uh, keep more as beautiful, they sending code enforcement stuff every week, every month. He got a stack of stuff up there. Like you say, he know what houses. He knows the problem, but it's the inaction that's causing a lot of anxiety. So that's what I want, that's what I was getting back to this board. You getting a board, but the board has no power. The other board that you want to create. They're not listening to the council. So, and they already getting the information. The information is already being provided to code enforcement. So you just wanna, see what, we talking about eliminating another board, creating another board. That's the problem. There's too many boards. There's too many boards.
So if the action would be, um, we probably need to put a time, a time attached to legacy training. So maybe next month when we come back, we can move past step one, because we're stuck. So I, I would like to ask the attorney, if he has to do this, to do some training, to go past step one.
No, Ross, and we've met before on this, and specifically met after this, and whenever the handoff and notices will go up again. I have no problem with that.
Okay. I want to carry on the meeting. What, what side are we on?
Well, we have, we have reports. I still have.
Okay, all right.
Uh, so one thing I was tasked with, is dealing with plague issue. Several members have asked that I look at. There's other ones that we could do with, with issues, especially when we have a plaguing problem. We have people who have plaguing problems themselves. So one thing I took a look at was occupational license. So one thing I took a look at was occupational license. People who have properties that have caused blight problems or, or just are out of, out of compliance with our beautification statutes, our ordinances, is take, right now, we cannot revoke or not issue occupational license to an individual who has a property that's not compliant. Uh, one thing that I would suggest after reviewing it and having looked at it is that we probably need to make amendments for our occupational license. Ordinance that says that the individual has properties that are in violation of the ordinances of the city of Bastrop, that that, or their license can be either A, they can, you can decline to extend the new license to them, or B, you can revoke theirs, and it would be simple, like a hearing that would be in front of the council for a condemned building. We would give the notice to show cause why their license is revoked, because the properties are in violation of city ordinances. And at that time, there would be a on the governing board, which is any occupational license or occupation requires. There's other ways to do it. Uh, other things that can be dropped, but the governing board, the city council would be able to vote to revoke somebody's occupational license, because they have properties that are continuing to exist in a state that violates the city ordinances. And so sometimes when you have people who are purchasing properties and just kind of sitting on them, and then they have a business where they're actually undertaking economic activity in the city, but they refuse to keep other properties of, then the person who is the listed owner having licenses for which they have occupational license for, which they're owner, they can have those things revoked. I would suggest that's what needs to occur. If you're willing to bring that amendment to the council, have them based and look at it, that's something that can see.
We both like to do something.
Yeah, because we got one particular person that's got sixty-nine's properties. And, you know, you look around, it's the same person that we have been struggling with uptown, all the buildings. When you look at it, this one person owns it. But then again, they're nuisance to the city of Bastrop, causing other companies to want to come to Bastrop because of all of this blight. And they're the main one who are taking it. And then they turn around and have three occupational licenses, a different judgment. If you, I feel like this, if you, are you causing the city harm and pain, why should you prosper off the city with other occupational license?
And, and I think even, you know, we don't, I don't, legally don't make moves related to just wanting to be toward telling one person. But Taylor's, the interest of the city is, is that you have somebody who has a grievous amount of benefit from the city, but in the same token is a lot of properties that exist in the state. It is deterring other people and affecting the quality of life of the residents as a business they run. I mean, it's, it's the benefit of the detriment that you can talk about in a business in the city of Bastrop, but in the same token, you get to also operate properties, uh, and own properties in a state that causes residents to have a misquality of life. These, these things are not within what this governing board in the city has said. It's the minimum that your property should look like, uh, and the residence, for the residence of Bastrop. I, I agree with you on that. I think it's a, more than the, there's always an extreme example of, is that there's multiple individuals who have occupational licenses and have property or properties that are in extreme states of disrepair.
And the one that Mr. Graham is alluding to with the sixty-seven properties, I mean, he has two kids next door to somebody's houses, and big rats are running now. So we need to create some type of emergency plan, because I think this is a state of emergency. Especially with this one property on, we have to figure out something and figure it out quick.
I think until you force people to come to the table, it's like when we did our code format, until you have the proper evidence to force people to come to the table, or put something at risk if they do not, well, there's no risk involved.
But you know, we have the process, we just not doing it.
Yeah, well, I mean, we, we can get the.
But we can serve, we can serve this particular person. We know where they are.
Yeah.
So what can we do to serve him and his business? Even though we not standing for this anymore.
I think that's, I think it's a, it's a way to take a shot at line and pounce them. You know, that we can go on the other side of it. They can come to the hearing that would have to be before this governing body. They can explain to the council who has to answer.
And I think it was personally to come to a next meeting. I mean, he was not responsible.
Has to come to this council and ask for it. So I think we get an order to place that amends our occupational ordinance, allow revocation, and/or the uh, ability to not extend an occupational license to the individual who has this type of properties. I think at that point, uh, that will give us greater team to bring people to the table, and at least come and explain why it exists that way and not justify it. Uh, then at that point, you can revoke the license or decline to.
Well, well, no, they wouldn't. So let's do something. Let's move on.
And so I think that's, at the, at the next meeting, bring to the board that ordinance for introduction and option. To be able to, to give greater oversight to the, to Bastrop city government, to oversee people who are creating plaguing problems.
Okay, we still on solutions?
Still set, yeah, set up.
That is a solution oriented instead of constant indictment on the percy, who made a number of eight action on ordinance and revolution, introduced a previous leave, anything on that.
I know, I, I know, I got stuff off the roof. Hold on, hold on.
All right. Let's, let's, let's take a, a recess to be a bad.
Okay.
Rest of the resolution twenty-five, two, zero nine, two, the resolution amendment previously adopted consolidated budget. Adoption for revenue and expenditure for fiscal year, July one, twenty twenty-four. And ended June thirty, twenty twenty-five. Of course, that has something to do with, uh...
This is the title of the lease.
Yeah. Okay, we're waiting for the time to return. I'll tell you what, for the sake of time. We'll come back to that. That's the one to other new business and when we talk about item number, you have an A for ambulance.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, we talked about it. We were fixing to go around.
They don't have things that should be talking about that.
Introduction of and permitted action on proposed ordinance and resolution, resolution twenty-five, twenty ninety-two, the resolution amendment previously adopted consolidated budget. Adoption resolution for revenue and expenditure for fiscal year, July one, twenty twenty-four. And ended June thirty, twenty twenty-five.
That was, that was the resolution we previously discussed about the section and it, I think everybody just agreed to table all that and got it.
What was that? Agreed to table it?
Yeah, they, everybody agreed, that was what we did in the track stuff and everything, we already agreed to table all that. I think that was newly addressed in two items.
Okay. Did you take care of the ambulance? Here, we give a lead discussion act in the business, maybe off upon C A to demolish of houses on that right. That, that is what I did.
That's why I, for the record, uh... I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm so sorry, I apologize.
Go ahead.
Just, just to go back to ten A.
Ten A?
Uh, one information, turn it down. What, what, what was the conclusion for ten A?
For ten A? Y'all tabled that with the track thing. That was when we talked about the track program on Mr., uh, on Councilman Bradford. And you said that was the, the resolution at twenty, that twenty-five, twenty ninety-two, which is one that section seven, instead of just four programs without teams.
Yeah, yeah, the, the reason I ask because also in the resolutions there, resolution amendment previously adopted consolidated budget. Adoption resolution general funds, all special revenue funds.
That was, that was the title of the original, uh, budget adoption instrument and all we were doing was supplementing that instrument with a section seven. Okay, add to it a section seven that says that you, that ten A count.
So I... So we tabled it so, because I don't want to go into whole spiel, we tabled it.
Yeah, y'all tabled it, y'all tabled it.
There were other items on that resolution?
Yeah, see, that's...
There, there were items, that was just, that was just attached to the budget revolution item, the track was adopted budget. That, that, I remember it voted on the...
Yeah, you're right, but the, the, that's the one, that's what the thing about is when you, when you, when you make it, when you adopt a resolution, a resolution read what it read. And it read all special revenue funding, that mean that anything that happened. It needed amended by adopting this resolution, we adopted it as well.
Correct, but there's no amendments to the budget in that thing, it's just a, it's just adding a budget statement, uh, statement from the council as to the intent of why things were amended the way they were.
But we tabled it, ain't no, I had no action on it.
No, you tabled it.
Clear.
Yeah.
Let the record, the record reflect that, Mr. Riff, please. We tabled it, we didn't make it, we didn't do it. Take that action on this resolution.
Yeah, that, that was tabled.
Okay. All right, brings us down to item D. Um, this day off of C A or demolition of houses on that right.
I want to ask for correction on that, Mayor, um, the houses on Marible.
Marible, man. Okay. I was looking at that, then I knew.
Correct, so, uh, if, if you, I'll present what just happened here. So, Councilperson Evan had brought to me that there was three houses that we had condemned and she proved it worth it by getting these houses condemned, specifically eight oh six, eight oh eight, and eight sixteen Marible. Uh, eight oh eight, eight, eight oh six, eight oh eight, and eight sixteen Marible, uh, were previously condemned by order of this council. Uh, they were be to be demolished immediately, uh, the houses as they sit now are still erected. Uh, Councilperson Carson Tatten brought to me that they were able to get with a contractor who would do it at a very fair rate. And then she desired to use some of the funds that she was allocated in the art money that was for her district to perform these services, so I put together the agreement as we had similarly done with another house. Whereby the contractor would perform, perform the work, because on, different than the previous one that had been done by Councilman Bradford, this house has been taken all the steps, we have the right to go in and do it. And the contractor was willing to do it for, uh, a, a very reasonable sum, it was going to be three thousand on one house, three thousand on another, twenty-five hundred on another, which would be a total of eighty-five hundred, eighty-five hundred dollars. Paid, and I have spoke with the individual who has it, and they are, they are a licensed business, they are a nonprofit organization, uh, corporation, and they possess the proper licensing. And they will provide the proof that they're insured, uh, to be able to perform these services. Once the services are performed, they submit an invoice to us, they'll be paid on that. And the city factory would have provided the building to place, leaning against them as they normally would in that manner. And that she was going to dedicate, uh, three thousand, three thousand, and twenty-five hundred to have this, to have this done and have those problems taken care of. I will say on Marible Street, I've been contacted numerous times, offices, Marible Houses, this, this, last year about, because this is on the thoroughfare that goes back to high school. And, uh, Councilperson Tatten was able to reach out. There, it says not to exceed the eight hundred hundred, and there's a reason for that, there was some discussion about possibly if we could compare, if, if it was able to be done, or if there's any match funds that would be able to be provided by the, uh, ci- civic organization, then that amount would be less. And I believe, uh, Councilperson Tatten is working with them, but those, those people do not need to be part of the C A, just this company. And, uh, and that would get that one done, I have it typed up, it, it's, we can print it and everything can be done, so it would be, uh, very similar to what Councilperson, Councilman Bradford had done. With a lot of us who place a leaning for the cost expended by us up to the, uh, eighty-five hundred dollar.
Yeah, okay, go ahead. Can you get a blank copy?
Yes.
Set for each count?
Correct, you can.
As case we want to, uh, uh, copy it.
That, and that's perfectly fine, I can, I've had one, I have an email over to this, this Austin, anybody take this a second, print, oh, and then I'll go through the second one and we can, uh...
I, I do want to say about this first one, I am happy, um, to get this done, citizens are bastards, proud, um, especially the citizens in that area. They have been complaining, this has been a nuisance, um, elderly people have been kind of afraid because activities have been going on in these houses, so I am delighted that this is gonna happen.
I say, I say your motion.
I, I asked for a focus, so, uh, the, the people property, just speaking of, have they, they, you said they have been condemned, I mean, we don't need to say a commission of the, our own, uh, 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 I'm asking that question because if we can get other condemned, I mean, Mr. Mike, excuse me. We, we get Mr. Mike Duffy to, to even condemn the process, no matter, it, it doesn't matter what donor thinks, right?
Correct, these houses have been condemned, they're condemned by order of this council, uh...
By this council or by who?
By the council, this council, and condemnings have to come through the government authority, which is the city council.
If I bring the property management before the council, that then if you condemn, they will vote on it, yes or no?
Correct, we, we, we issue, we issue, so in those circumstances, there is a little bit of a higher standard that has to be gone. Uh, just a quick flash through, you would cite the property, uh, until that, that appearance show cause on the date for a hearing in front of this council. And when they show cause of that hearing, then we file the notice down in the mortgage records and the mortgage records, that way if anybody buys and they say, hey, this property is subject to a condemning hearing. At that hearing, we would then present to you the engineer's report, which is required, that says, yes, this does meet the, the standard, which is a dangerous, uh, a dangerous structure. Uh, that's presented to the record, at that time, the property owner or tenant or anybody can show cause as to why this should not be condemned. Once condemned, you can settle to be destroyed immediately or to, uh, be destroyed upon certain delay of days. Uh, but in any case, the, the property owner has the right to do it all the way up till the time that we take action. After you take action on it and actually get in the process of demolishing it, uh, at that point, you're, you have the right as the city of Baxton to place a leaning against it for the cost expended for demolition.
Okay, I'm, I'm glad to hear that, that's fair, that, that you're telling me the property has been condemned on the side of the post office? Yeah, you're saying that the, the front of the business, that it have been condemned? And, uh, and we can go ahead and do it?
Yeah, it's, it's, that property has been condemned, as has the school buildings. As has the old school buildings.
At, at, oh, okay, well, well, we can, that's a, that's a...
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're coming to my business, if you talk to me.
No, no, I'm, I'm just asking a question, because your business got all the complaints on the post office.
Well, I tell you, because I'm, I answer more questions, but... But good question, but, but... Also, um, maybe, maybe like a month or two weeks ago, that, um, we have met the mayor, James Will, we have been out there about that building, in the engineer, so he got the process going.
Okay, okay, well, I, I...
I thought I had shared with you, but then I apologized.
I was waiting, you know, the way you just explained it, business went through all the process, it's a matter of getting some, uh, it was agreed on, we got two hundred and, two hundred thousand dollars for that. But if he wants to, that's his business, I mean, you know, I'm not getting this business, why we not utilize the, the fund that we have?
Okay, we still have the process and procedure that Mr. D Green educated, we were out there, the engineer was out there, environmental study. We still have to adhere to those things, but it has been initiated. Okay, did this, Mr. Tatten, did this take care of both?
No, ma'am.
If, if I can take it out of order to discuss it and then get the paper copies to present to everybody of what it, of what it says exactly, and they're pretty clear and concise. Uh, but if I can take it out of order to present the next item, which is the water endeavor agreement regarding the repairs. In specific, this is, uh, again, Councilperson Tatten reached out to you in regards to a home that exists on eight fifty-three Forest Avenue. In specific, uh, this individual had an issue regarding sewer, had, the sewer line had backed up. There was a claim that was presented to insurance on it, insurance, for purposes of this, insurance requires that we be on notice, there was an issue, we didn't... They determined that we didn't have that issue, doesn't stop the possibility of litigation, but in necessity, the homeowner actually had begun to repair certain things. Uh, the more onerous stuff, which is the dirt, the clean out, everything like that, thing that would remain was approximately eighteen hundred dollars worth of flooring. She reached out and says, is there any way that we can provide this? I wondered that, yes, a, a C A would be able to do this, and what we would do to this is a C A would benefit that, uh, this individual would release the potential claims, which I can tell you, this is valued on six much higher than eighteen hundred bucks. But would release any claims and in return, a third party would, uh, potter floors and more, would provide the services, there's an invoice for it for eighteen hundred dollars. And that would resolve any claims, that would, the owner of the property would, would release us of any claims, uh, that could exist for that potential event. And in return, uh, Councilperson Tatten wished to dedicate eighteen hundred funds to settle those potential claims that could exist by having the floors repaired in that house on eight fifty-three Forest. And, uh, I think it's good, and I have the invoice, I can have that C A print here.
Thank you, I'll send them on.
Yeah, most...
Yeah, I like it, it's like a motion that, um...
But I heard a second guy go, I don't believe the hand.
Well, I, I, I'll, I'll leave it anyway.
If I could, if I could, I did have, if I did have a request from Mr. Lock, that can do these things prior to, to loading all that, is that correct, Mr. Lock? So if I could have a moment, just to print these real quick, get these printed up.
Oh, okay. Uh, that, that brings us towards the end, I, I didn't do announcements, but, um, Mr. Tito, touch something. We're, we're cleaning up, and we have a plan with the lady, uh, is one of those small grants that we got through Act three ninety-seven. We got the fence up, old brick apart.
Yes, sir.
So, we want to, um, now daylight, save your time, that should, should help us a little bit. We're gonna start at District Eight, properties have been identified, and, uh, thank you, Ms. Hutchinson, for bringing my attention, though I had posted it about, um, cleanup. That we always do manually, so we're gonna stay part of, but we will probably start, but we can pick up and coexist. We can continue over to do, and we might do every district, and if this district is left out, you try to bail out.
I don't know, we, we, if we buy places, we gonna be involved, alright? Yeah, I'm gonna be everybody's district.
Okay, okay, all right, so we're gonna continue, uh, looking at every district. We've assessed, we know some things, if you know of some spots in your area, let us know, because we don't stretch what's left of that money as far as possible. The initial process has already been initiated on blind, this money, the portal has not opened yet, but I have, I had a meeting, so we will be applying.
How bad is that?
Ten grand. Are there any other announcements?
I have one, oh, well, all my constituents reside in District D, I have a dumpster day in this March, March twenty-second, from eight, eight AM until seven PM. So anybody who resides in my district, feel free to come. Bring anything you trying to throw away for Ryan House.
I got, I got a point of information. Are we keeping up with each district? The Mounts campus in each district? Only, only dumpsters, are we, do we, how do we, do we have to get a C A on that, or how, how did that, how did that come about? Because everybody, we get dumpsters, we gonna keep the same protocol, so, how did, uh, how did that come about with that, I mean, what, what, what's the deal with the dumpsters?
That was a request from Mr. J Green.
No, it was the D Green. Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, okay. Mr. D Green, that's one of his initiatives, so it was done by way of purchase or position.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, so I'm gonna make sure that it's done equally across the board, what I'm saying is we don't need, I don't need no C A for my dumpsters, what I'm trying to get, when I get ready to do a dumpster, I want the same process in place, so... I'm just saying, because I got a, I got something in my district also, I don't, I don't want no pickup, so no problem when it comes to my dumpsters. I want to treat you the same way to treat this district, because we ain't got no C A or nothing. So, uh, you know, I, I, I call balls and strikes, when you say you're done, then you should, you should do what you...
Okay, I can believe, I'm gonna turn it down.
You just make the request to you?
No, sir.
Who made the request?
Mr. Or.
Make the request to Mr. Or?
We just have to find a spot.
Then find a spot.
We can coordinate with Mr. Or.
Okay, we can coordinate with Mr. Or.
And, and because of the, of, you know, we're working, the money is in general fund now, which all the rules and regulations are applicable to general fund. But also, let's be mindful, we have a tax that the city pays, to the payers.
Okay, I'm I'm glad, just just compared it. Uh, uh, you telling me the property have been condemned from the side of the post office? Yeah, you're selling it in front of the business, and it have been condemned, and, uh, and we can go ahead and do it?
Yeah, it's, that that property has been condemned, as has the school buildings.
And what else?
As has the built school buildings.
And, uh, and, oh, okay, well, oh, we can, that's initial.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You coming to my issues if you talking.
No, no, I'm I'm just asking a question, because your issue got all of my friends at the post office.
Watch that, you're saying why I answer for a question.
Good question, but, but.
I just wanted to give.
Also, um, maybe, maybe like, maybe two weeks ago, though, that, um, we have met the mayor, changed, well, we have been out there about that building, and introduced, so we got the process going.
Okay, okay, well, I.
I thought I had shared with you, but then I apologize.
I was waiting, you know? You know, the way he just explained it, it went through all the process, it's a matter of getting, uh, it was a agreement to do, we got two hundred and, two hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, that's.
It has to come out of there, but if he wants it, that's his business. I mean, you know, I'm not in this business, why we not utilizing the fund that we have?
Okay, we still have the process and procedure that Mr. D Green educated. We were out there, the engineers out there, in Bible study. We still have to adhere to those things, but it has been initiated. Okay, did this, Mr. Tatten, did this take care of both?
No, ma'am. So if if I take it out of order to discuss it, and then get the paper copies to present to everybody of what it of what it says exactly, and they're pretty clear and concise. Uh, but if I take it out of order to present the next item, which is the Walker Endeavor Agreement regarding the repairs. In specific, this is, uh, again, Councilperson Tatten reached out to you in regards to a home that exists on eight fifty three Forest Avenue. And in specific, uh, this individual had an issue regarding sewer, had, the sewer line had backed up. There was a claim that was presented to insurance on it. Insurance for purposes of this, insurance requires that we get our notice. There was an issue. We didn't, they determined that we didn't have that issue. Doesn't stop the possibility of litigation. But in necessity, the homeowner actually had begun to repair certain things. Uh, the more honored stuff, which is the dirt, the clean out, everything like that, thing that would remain was approximately eighteen hundred dollars for the flooring. She reached out and says, is there any way that we can provide this? I wondered that, yes, a CDA would be able to do this, and what would do this is the CDA would benefit that, uh, this individual would release any potential claims, which I can tell you, this is valued on six much higher than eighteen hundred bucks. But would release any claims, and in return, a third party would, uh, potter's floors and more, would provide the services. There's an invoice for it, thirty nine dollars. And that would resolve any claims. It would, the owner of the property would would release us of any claims, uh, that could exist for that potential event. And in return, uh, Councilperson Hatten wished to pay eighteen hundred funds to settle those potential claims that could exist by having floors repaired in that house on eight fifty three Forest. And, uh, I do, I think it's good, and I have the invoice, and I can have that CDA printed here.
Make your motion. I say your motion.
Well, you have a motion.
Yeah, I like, look into the, um.
But I heard the second guy is open.
Well, I I I'll leave it.
If I could, if I could, I did have, if I did have requests from Mr. Lock, that give you these things prior to to loading all that, correct, Mr. Lock? So if I could have a moment, just to print these real quick, get these printed up.
Oh, okay. Uh, that that brings us towards the end. I didn't do announcements, but, um, Mr. Tito, touch yourself. With, uh, with cleanup, and we have a plan with the lady, the thos, and one of those small grants that we got to act three ninety seven. We got the fence up, old brick and park.
Yes, sir.
So we want to, um, now that daylight, save your time, that should should help us a little bit. Both are starting, District A's properties have been identified. And, uh, thank you, Ms. Hutchinson, for bringing to my attention, though, I had posted it about, um, cleanup. That we always do manually. So we're gonna stay hard, but we will probably start, but we can pick up and coexist. And continue what we're doing, about delivery district, and give your district a use. That's how you try to build out.
I don't know. We we give it by places, we gonna be involved. Yeah, I'm gonna be everybody's.
Okay, all right. So we're gonna continue.
Love it.
Looking at every district. We've assessed, we know some things, if you know of some spots in your area. Let us know, since we don't stretch what's left of that money as far as possible. The initial process has already been initiated on blind. Some money, the portal has not opened yet, but I have, so I had a meeting, so we will be applying.
How bad is that, Grant?
Are there any other announcements?
I have one. Oh. Well, all my constituents reside in District D. I have a dumpster day in this March, March twenty second, from eight, eight AM to seven PM. So anybody who resides in my district, feel free to come. Bring anything you trying to throw away for Ryan House.
I got, I got.
Point of information.
All good. Are we keeping up with each district? The mountains, and each district? Okay, and, um, on on dumpsters, are we, do we? How do we, do we have to get a CDA on that, or how how did that, how did that come about? Because everybody, we get dumpsters, we gonna keep the same protocol, so. How did, uh, how did that come about with that? I mean, what what what's the deal with the dumpsters? Well, my goodness, that was a request from Mr. J Green.
No, Mr. D Green.
He was, yes.
D Green, that's one of his initiatives. So it was done by way of purchase repossession.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. So I'm gonna make sure that it's done equally across the board. What I'm saying is, we don't need, I don't need no CDA for my dumpsters. What I'm trying to get, when I get ready to do a dumpster, I want the same process in place, so. I'm just saying, because I got a, I got something for my district also. I don't, I don't want no pickup, so no problem with my dumpster. I want to treat you the same way that treat this district. Because we ain't got no CDA or nothing. So, uh, you know, I I I call balls and strikes.
You should, you should, you should do it just. Did it make the request to you?
No, sir.
Who made the question?
Mr. O.
Make the request with Mr. O?
So we just have to find this.
Have to find the spot.
I can coordinate it, just the O.
Okay, let's coordinate with Mr. O. And and because of the often, you're working, well, the money is in general fund now, which all the rules and regulations are applicable to general fund. But also, let's be mindful, we have a tax that the city pays to the parent. So we just need to be mindful of, we getting dumpsters, that we're not, uh, doing something that's relieving someone who is paid by a dedicated tax. A one time thing, that 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 word's, that Mr. Jones. Yeah, okay.
Just the one time thing.
Okay, yeah, I don't wanna make that. I can, yeah, I still.
See, we have the, I'm talking about them. We have the, uh.
Don't, don't, don't critique what I'm trying to do. Not you, not you, not you. I'm talking to the council. What I, what I'm doing is, is, is not a cost. Everybody knows.
Yeah, I'm probably.
Yeah, you guys know this, but don't critique it. Just do it.
Okay, we have now come to the end of this meeting.
All right, can we adjourn?
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, we gotta hold on, uh. I mean.
I don't wanna hear nobody now.
I'm I'm holding it.
Now you ready to go. You gotta wait until.
Yeah, I'm ready. I'm gonna go to the.
Ms. Hutchinson, while the way, what what are those dates I posted, that I I'll have to repost to that thing? We need volunteers, but we're starting a little early. As soon as Mr. O's head is paying, you have brain, and, go ahead, what what are those dates? Because you always partner with.
Yes, ma'am. Um, Latita Hutchinson, three oh seven Louis Street. Keep, um, Louisiana Beautiful's Love the Wood Week is April fifth, Saturday, April fifth through Sunday, April thirteenth. And so I'm sure there will be cleanups leading up to that, like what in dumpster day, like what Dee Dee is doing. And then I plan on hosting a cleanup on Saturday, April fifth, to kick it off, and then Saturday, April twelfth, to close out. Uh, the one on the twelfth is already underway. We're gonna be with Ash High School chairs, and all, we'll have about probably fifty, sixty kids. Uh, sponsors are welcome, because you know, we gotta feed all the high school kids that get done working hard. Um, so if anybody wanna help with that, but the one on the fifth will be open to the community. Um, so we're looking forward to partnering again.
On the, on the, on the Phil's, sorry, I didn't, Phil, where y'all be at?
The fish, we are planning on being at, um, Robinson Williams Restoration Hall.
All right, that's the area, area y'all gonna do?
Mm-hmm. And, uh, my ground, uh, park, uh, in that area.
Can I find out what y'all are coming to today?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Y'all wanna get teed up with it?
Yes, sir. Come on, never call for the beer.
I like the one here, that shit. All right, you ready to turn it down?
I'm waiting on the phone, she's got the, the documents, you go.
You're going to have the cottage, right?
Yeah.
I make the motion to join? You need food, so it's cool. I'm glad it's playing, that is, right.
You, man, go ahead, you see, you know, man.
Don't you say you want me more? We made that, we made that to my show.
I know, I know.
You say I was, well. You say something that didn't have a word, I want that, I. Something a motive was going on. You say I'm playing. Yeah, that was, I was, uh.
Smooth now. He was in the south.
I'm here, I'm playing, I'm just about playing, I don't know.
I I can't understand this. The doctor was playing, he was playing.
But this is, I do this, I do. Do you feel, do you? Do you? Do you, oh, do you?
I don't know.
I was, I was not getting three minutes. I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do it earlier. Put that to hold. This was a lot. He know, he know we're popping dumpster. So we leave the, I hired up some. We're gonna join this meeting. Yeah, do it. You can't rip it up.
I hear that fan.
He even have some, like, air room.
I hear that fan. What he said, he's beating. What you thought? Well, I. You gotta wait for something weird.
This meeting is adjourned.
Ma'am.